Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for November 10, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance in a silent per.
Alderman Elsa. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso. Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Nujem.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay. Before we do public speaking, we're going to move on to a little quick presentation. Going to call up the Chief of Staff for Mayor Penaruski, Joe Gary. And we just want to give a quick presentation to the outgoing Aldermen and give them a little thanks for all they've done.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor and privilege to represent Mayor Penaruski, who could not be with us tonight. We want to acknowledge several Aldermen who terms will end on December 1st. We have some plaques. There are two plaques that we don't have tonight for Alderman Elsa and Alderman Rodriguez, and they will come back at the next meeting, and we will have the plaques from that night. So, in no uncertain order, I'd like to call up first Alderwoman Mary Grace Cavallo. Next, I'd like to call up Alderman Mike Salvio. Alderman Blal Tajaldeen. Majority Leader Chris Dorso.
Okay. We also have a couple other plaques. They're on their way. Some of the races were... We didn't know how they'd end, so they will be on the way, and we'll invite those Aldermen back for the next meeting. With that, next item on the agenda will be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, please sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 327 Bucks Hill Road, Vincent Scott Amiglia. Vincent Scott Amiglia from 327 Bucks Hill Road came down to talk to you about the plate reader scanner you have on the police cars. Got a lot of unregistered vehicles in this city, and they're having a problem if the car's unregistered. You got to give it 24 hours before you tow it. Another town's towing them immediately, getting them off the street. That's one of the reasons why my insurance, car insurance, is so high. And you're not enforcing any of the parking laws, especially in my neighborhood, wrong side of the road, on the sidewalks, blocking the sidewalks, too close to the fire hydrant, then the no turn on red and running the red lights. How many tickets have the city given out? How much city has the city made from them? Are they doing anything about it? And the speeding on Bucks Hill Road when Willby lets out with carloads of kids, they're doing 70, 80 at my house sometimes. And the pension fund, since the city got 36 million or something from Watertown, are you going to reimburse some of that to the pension fund? And if the pension fund's going to get paid for the interest and the compound interest, the money is lost since you borrowed it? Then another question of mine is about the new water line you're putting in, the plastic water line made out of black plastic. Well, I guess it has the most cancer-causing particles are in black plastic. The pipes left wide open. It's hibernation time. Are rats, rodents, possums, raccoons, animals going inside that pipe, and nobody knows about it? It's being left open 24 hours a day. And with the campers and stuff throughout the neighborhoods. To my knowledge, you're not supposed to be parked on residential property or commercial vehicles parked on residential property or being parked in a residential neighborhood at night. How come the city doesn't enforce all these? Is it easier to raise the taxes, or is it would be harder to force the laws? You enforce all the laws, you might be able to lower the taxes. Have a nice day. Oh, one more thing. If the Democrats and the Republicans both care about the city, instead of arguing with each other, why don't you work together and get something done? If you can't do that, step down, let somebody else do it. Next speaker from 70 Blackman Road, State Representative Larry Butler.
Good evening, President DiGiovin Carlo and honorable members of this Board of Aldermen. For the record, my name is Larry Butler. I reside at 70 Blackman Road. I'm the State Representative, 72nd District, which is home to many schools, but one in particular, Willby High School, is on the agenda tonight, item number five. But before I get to that, I'd just like to actually thank all the members that have served that tonight is their last night on this board, because nobody knows all the work that you do outside of these meetings. But I know that you've actually put in a lot of hours serving this city, so thank you for your service. And I'd like to congratulate those who will come in after they're sworn in, December 1st, so hoping that they will do a great job as well. Now, as far as item number five is concerned, it's addressing a football field. A football field that I actually spearheaded $3 million almost four years ago to build a football and track field at Willby High School. It's about time they showed up on the agenda to be built. So I'm asking this board to make sure that everything's brought to bear to do this as soon as possible. Willby deserves a football field like the other high schools have, like Crosby High School is the vision. Because when you go up to Willby High School, there's a big sign that says, "The Willby High School Sports Complex." If you drive up there and look at the field, it is a disgrace. We should never let any of our schools fall in that kind of disrepair. So I'm asking that we do everything we can to build this football field and track field for Willby High School. Like at Crosby, there's residents in that area that actually walk, jog, and it's a community project. Same thing at Willby High School. It will serve as a project to serve the Bucks Hill community so that they could walk the field and jog. So I'm asking not only for the Willby High School student athletes, but for the Bucks Hill community. Willby High School, Bucks Hill is a part of Waterbury too, so everyone should get on board and support that because it's Waterbury. Thank you.
Next speaker from 3221 East Main Street, Unit H, Alan Leon.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, my name is Alan Leon. I'm from 3221 East Main Street. First off, I'd like to congratulate all the re-elected Board of Aldermen. Nicely done. Please remember to serve the citizens of Waterbury. I'd like to also congratulate the newly-elected Board of Aldermen. Make sure you serve the citizens of Waterbury. And lastly, for those that are currently Aldermen who did not earn reelection, thank you for a job well done. It's been noticed certainly by me as well. My talk tonight is going to be about, a little bit about human nature. There was a contemporary of William Shakespeare back in the 1500s. His name was Christopher Marlowe. He was a poet laureate and an author. And it was during the time of Shakespeare, and he had tremendous influence on William Shakespeare because he was a master of the Elizabethan language. And Dr. Christopher Marlowe wrote a number of novels, but one of them was the tragic history of the life and death of Dr. Faustus. That's been rehashed by a German author by the name of Goethe, and also it was an American version called The Devil and Daniel Webster. Basically the same thing. It's about a person's having arrogant pride, hubris, as they say. And during the Elizabethan time, there was this individual, this character, Dr. Faustus, who was in his circle of friends. They were very educated, very astute, and one in particular seemed to know everything. He's also a little bit of a magician as well, too. And this really disturbed Dr. Faustus. So during one of his weaker moments, he called on the devil to help him. So certainly the devil showed... Well, he sent up an intermediary by the name of Mephistopheles or Mephisto. And he says, "What do you want me here for?" He says, "What can I do to better my knowledge?" Because back then, knowledge was power. Today, money is power. It's a little bit different, but still applicable. And so the devil's assistant says, "Okay, I can give you all the knowledge in the world, the universe, and you'll have untold wealth, but what I need in return is your soul." So he sells his soul to the devil, and he gets 24 years of this all-powerful knowledge. And this Dr. Faustus grew to be the most preeminent individual during that period of time. And he was approached at three different times by maybe a servant of God who offered him redemption if he would repent. And each time, because Dr. Faustus had this arrogant pride, he refused it. So as time passed, 24 years later, it's time now to... Mephistopheles comes to reclaim his soul and take him down through the gates of hell. It's a great story, and it applies to a lot of individuals today with arrogant pride. And so he's given one more chance to repent. And if he repents, the contract would be broken, which it was unbreakable. But he fails to do so, so he's dragged down to the gates of hell. And that's how the story ends. But when the American version was created, it was about an individual, a poor farmer up in New England, who had just tragedy after tragedy, life's ordeals, poor. And in his weaker moments, he summons the devil, and certainly the devil shows up. Same situation, but he gets seven years of untold wealth and crops that were going to grow. A little different than Dr. Faustus, he shares his wealth with the current other farmer.
One minute.
So, to make the long story short, when the time comes at the end where he's going to have to give up his soul, he enlists Daniel Webster, who was a senator but a very eloquent speaker, and he represents him in a court of law. And everything looked in favor of the devil, but at the very last moment, Daniel Webster says to the farmer, "Will you repent and forgive all the sins that you've caused?" And he says, "I do," because he genuinely was a good soul, and he didn't have that arrogant pride. And he was saved. And that's the only piece of literature where an individual was saved in that storyline. So what I say is if there's anybody who is down a rabbit hole and sees no way out, just know that there are things in place that can help get you out if you can't get yourself out. And if you've summoned a devil of some sort and feel trapped, know that there's a way out, and you can do it with dignity. And I'd like to thank everybody tonight for listening to me.
Next speaker from 1400 Marion Road, Martin Spring.
Thank you, sir. Martin Spring, 1400 Marion Road. Before I start, I just remind everybody tomorrow is Veterans Day. Let's remember all our veterans tomorrow, because to me, without the veterans, we wouldn't be here speaking. Tomorrow, there's going to be an event right down the hall, 11 o'clock, 11 hour, 11 month, 11 year, when World War I ended, but they changed it to Veterans Day, to honor all the veterans. I know our family has a lot of veterans. I have two grandsons right now. They're in the service, and they're serving their country, so we're very proud of them. So anyways, just to let you know, our guys are going to be there tomorrow, the Sons of the American Revolution, which I'm a member of. I'm the first sergeant for our company. And we're going to be there tomorrow presenting the colors. So I hopefully, a lot of people here could come tomorrow to that. That would be very important. I also want to thank Kelly and others, who are very much involved with the Veterans Committee. I had something that I did want to say. I want to do something, congratulate everybody who is going to be leaving. I don't want to say, you know, goodbye, because I know you're all going to be coming back and probably coming here and speaking at the podium. So those of you who are coming in, I want to also congratulate you. And those of you who didn't win, I don't want to say bon voyage, because, you know, I know you're all good people, and you have a good heart and soul, and you really love your community and the city of Waterbury. So I don't really have a lot of time, but I did want to talk about the voting and the 2025 municipal elections. District 1, they had a total of 2,090 voted, okay? District 2, 879. That's the 72nd. And I don't know why, it seemed like there's never that many people voting in that district. So maybe you people who are in the 72nd could check that out and find out what's the delay, why people don't want to show up at the polls. District 3, you had 2,486 voted. District 4, which is my district, you had 2,598 voted. District 5, which is Jack Elsa, by Jack, I wanted to wish you the best of luck. I know Jack about 35, 40 years. Anyways, 976 voted. And so, you know, I'm just saying that this doesn't seem like there wasn't that many people voting, because you have over here 976 voted, low turnout. Ask yourself why. Total eligible voters citywide was 55,284, and that gets it from the town clerk's office. So it seems to me that there was not a lot of people voting. Like I said, it was, I think, 9,076 voted, and that was a very low turnout, probably less than 20%. So anyways, that's something that I... Yeah, I have the figure right here. I apologize. 9,161, okay? Came out to vote, very small percentage. That means 46,123 folks stayed home, even though we had early voting. Early voting, to me, at the Veterans Hall, with all due respect, to me, early voting was, to me, is a waste of time and taxpayers' money that proof is in the lack of interest in voting citywide. And then on November 2nd, on the Sunday, people did come out to vote. I think they voted on the Sunday. But the reason why I bring it up, because November 4th is on Election Day, as we know, and a lot of people probably did come out, as many as they could. But you got to understand, the polls were open from 6:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. And I'm not contradicting myself, but I really wish more people would come and vote. And so that's what I want to say. And I know my good friend Larry Butler came up and spoke about item number five. All I can say is, please support this in our sports. We should look at that, okay?
One minute.
Okay. I don't really have a lot of time to speak on this, but I want to say this. As far as the Public Health Director, Ashling, she needs your entire support on item 11, 12, 18, and 19 on the agenda. And there was a few more things I did want to say. That you look at items... Hold on a minute. Yeah. Item 22, 23, because I don't have time to talk about this, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, and I think 31, 32, 33. Basically, all that stuff is about towing and contracts. So before you people turn around and vote on some of these contracts with towing for the city of Waterbury, because this comes from Mark Olet, legal advisor of Waterbury Police Department, I would just say, ask yourself that these people, that they've been doing their job thoroughly for towing, because a long time ago, we had issues with a lot of towing in the city of Waterbury. So hopefully, you could take a good look at that. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harpers Ferry Road, Paul Kandesh.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Kandesh. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. Once again, I was on the internet looking to order something for Christmas. It's that time of year. And the letters I typed in, I got a pop-up. And the pop-up was from Kennedy High School marching band soliciting donations. The entire city knows they were the only marching band picked in the entire state of Connecticut to represent this city and this state in the Vietnam Memorial Day Parade in Honolulu, Hawaii. Now, you might think the cost is astronomical. I don't, at $250,000. This is an opportunity for our students to maybe have a once-in-a-lifetime chance to do this. I do not think... for our students to maybe have a once-in-a-lifetime chance to do this. I do not think that these students, who are going to school, have homework, have band practice every day, and go out on competitions on the weekend, should have to go out and raise the $250,000 to represent this city and this state in Hawaii. I believe there is money somewhere in the budget, and that's your job and the administration's job to find it. And I'm asking you to consider this. I think it's a travesty, I really do. I don't believe that we have given it the due diligence that we should have, okay? Just so you know, to date, donations, and I did donate because they asked for donations, are $1,267 as of today. At this rate, they won't get to Hawaii for 10 years, if they ever get there. So somewhere in the budget, somewhere in the department budgets, somewhere in the reserve fund, somewhere, somewhere, somewhere in this city, has to be $250,000 that we can give them to send them to Hawaii to represent this city and this state. A once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many of these students, and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Good evening, Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street, Waterbury. I have a few issues today, but I would also like to tell the aldermen that are leaving, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss all of you that are leaving, because it's like I'm very, I hate change. But anyhow, just know.
Ms. Taylor, can you speak up or get closer? Sorry, having trouble hearing you.
Oh, okay. All right. Yes. I was just saying, I miss the, I'm going to miss the people that are leaving. And know you're loved. Okay, so my first item, we have these cars in Waterbury, and I don't know if you have, I don't know if there's an ordinance for it in Waterbury, but the cars with the loud tailpipes that sound like gunshot. I've made a couple of calls to the Waterbury Police Department, thinking they were gunshots. And it's, I think it's a waste of their time coming, so it's like I refuse to call anymore. Because you don't know if it's gunshot, or you don't know if it's the tailpipe. And I was just wondering, isn't there an ordinance? Or back in the day, there used to be, if you had a loud tailpipe, you would get fined for it. The next thing, my laundromat that's on the corner of Hopkins and Cook Street. So they went ahead and they allowed it to be there. So it's like I sort of kind of got over that, until I went out the other day and came back from my walk and found out that they have a "coming soon" sign up there for food, for empanadas and french fries and hot dogs. And there's already enough traffic on that street. People have to back down the street. The city did put parking signs, no parking on the corner. And it's a joke, because nobody pays attention to it. The cars, the trucks, that have to bring food into the bodega on the corner, they're parked there, they're parked in the bus spot. So it's an issue. But it's like I did go to the zoning board this morning, and they were saying that food in the back of the laundromat was not supposed to be done. So they said "coming soon," so I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention. And I do have a question. Can they put a food truck back there? I know you can't answer me now, but it's like, I'm thinking they're trying to put a food truck back there in the parking lot, and the parking lot is this big. And my last issue, or just, it's not an issue, it's just in my opinion. I went to pick up my girlfriend last, the other day, because we went to a meeting last week. And at the bottom of Greenwood, they did bring that curb in some. It's very dark over there. I know it's there, because I walk up there every day. But maybe if you put reflectors around the edge of the sidewalk going up that hill, because people that don't know about it, they're going to hit it. I didn't hit it, because I'm aware of it. But it's just an idea. And I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 180 Cook Street, Dolores Noel.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dolores Noel, and I live at 180 Cook Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. I am here to complain about the laundromat that's on the corner of Hopkins and Cook. I had to back halfway down the street today when I came home from work. Somebody almost rear-ended me in the back, because they don't want to stop, they don't want to do anything but what they want to do. It's dangerous over there. And we came here earlier this year stating that it would be problematic. Well, now it's problematic. So if y'all could just look at it again or something, because it's going to be very bad over there. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Next speaker from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samaska.
Good evening, Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street in Waterbury. And thank you for allowing us to be here, for supporting our Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and Bill of Rights, and enabling us to speak. We have walked forward in this country for over 300 years. It is not time to throw democracy out the window. And thank you for our city and our state, and our representatives who are trying so hard to make that difference. Considerations tonight, I am requesting that every board of alderman members sitting here, representing an area in town, meet with those people, walk those streets, engage with us, listen to what we have to say, bring it back here and make a difference. The more people think that nobody cares, the less they're going to vote. And do not stop voting here before elections in this building. I am a person who has to come when there's no one around, because I don't dare expose one of my family members who has a precarious health condition to anything. And that was the best way to do it. But primarily, meet with us, teach us, help people who don't understand voting or their rights stand up for them. And in our area of town, we are severely hampered, because we do not have a community group. Nobody gets to come to a meeting with us. Gil Martin is really good, but they're overwhelmed with what they do. The town plot group is really more socially oriented, and we have problems. And lots of new people, too many new houses, too close, and no one seems to care. You can make them, help them, open them to care. Okay? Amazon. I now look out my backyard, and on the hill, where there used to be a forest, there is nothing but open barren land. Why? What are the plans to prevent erosion and danger on the top of that hill? When you start talking 10 inches of rain, with no trees and no vegetation, you tell me where the water's going to go? There are large dump trucks using South Leonard in South Main, and I mean big, they're not little things. And as an example, which very well could apply to us, on Union City, on North Main Street, just near the post office, I was making a left. Coming down the street that I was going to make a left onto to get to Big Y, were the two longest tractor-trailer trucks, thin ones that I've ever seen in my life. They could not traverse that turn. They were taking up literally four lanes of traffic, two coming down the road, obviously, and the other two. What's going to happen if they come into Waterbury? What are the rules in this city for truck size? The roads they can travel on? I can just envision them making a left turn from Platts Mill Road onto Bristol Street. There goes the bridge, bye-bye. You know, we have to do something. What are our rights? And when they tailgate me, what can I do? The police department's not available. I'm calling, hey, I'm being tailgated. You're not going to get there in time. And I've already been struck from behind once. And I will ask again for our representatives in Hartford to seriously look into the fact why. It's considered no fault, and my license isn't harmed, but my insurance refuses to pay. Because if they pay, they're saying my rates go up, and eventually, I will have to pay for it anyway. That doesn't make any sense. An Amazon problem again, people at that plant. If AI comes in, is that null and void? What happens with seasonal workers? Are they part of this? They only work one to three months. If they're part of the thousand, I don't count that for very much. Healthcare is a horrible nightmare, but it's our fundamental right. Nutrition is our right also. Saving people is our right. Laughing at a child who might starve is not funny. Thinking that everybody who is on SNAP is a lazily, shiftless, no-good person, it's not true. It's not true. And we have to do something about this. It's discrimination to say things like that. It's ignorant to say things like that. Where is our checks, where are our checks and balances, the facts? And the other interesting thing is, stop SNAP. And according to what we're hearing, they don't want to replenish SNAP very soon, and they want to make new guidelines. That's like letting the horse out of the barn, and when the horse is gone, figuring out if they're ever going to catch him, because they won't. What's going to happen to these people on SNAP? And I had food stamps as a teenager, because my father was gone, and my mother was home alone and hadn't a job. I wouldn't be here today.
That's time, if you can summarize, if you can finish up.
I'm trying. The other thing I wanted to add to the voting is, we need to remember in this city, that families who are fighting to survive, who are now being pushed into a lower social economic level, have no time to think about voting. So when we're thinking about how to get voting back, that's another whole area that we need to get into. So start planning for January 2026 now, because it's not certain that the government won't be shut down again. And in 2026, for every person sitting here, get out, vote, and plan how we can keep democracy, because it's not dead unless we accept that it is. Thank you.
Next speaker from 34 West Liberty Street, Adrian Sanchez.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. So my name is Adrian Sanchez. I reside at 34 West Liberty Street. I'm the alderman-elect for the 5th district. And I'm here tonight to address Agenda Item 17, which is a tax assessment agreement with Kbar for the Phase 1 development. Now, I want to be clear from the start, that I do support redevelopment in Waterbury. I support creating quality housing, especially for our healthcare workers who serve the city every day. But I cannot support this tax abatement as it's currently written, because it gives away too much taxpayer value with too little accountability in return. In an overview of the proposal, the agreement before us fixes the market value of 55 Cold Street property at 3.5 million, and taxes it on 70% assessed value of 2.45 million for the next 10 years. But here's the catch. The property isn't taxed on the full amount. Instead, the city is offering a discounted percentage, starting at 47% of the value in year one, and only reaching 77% by year 10. This means the city will collect only about $680,000 in total property taxes over the next decade. If the same property were taxed at its full fixed value, we'd collect around 1.1, roughly 1.1 million dollars. And if it were taxed at its realistic market value, once completed and rented, we would roughly gain 13.2 million based on projected income. We'd collect about 416,000 per year in taxes, or 4.1 million over 10 years. So this agreement leaves Waterbury taxpayers about 3.5 million dollars short over the first decade alone. Meanwhile, the developer is purchasing the property for about 1.6 million, expects at least 9.4 million in state funding, plus rental income from 47 apartments, and still receives a major local tax break. My main concerns are straightforward. The abatement is calculated on the value of vacant, of a vacant school building, not a completed, income-producing property. The city takes on the redevelopment risk, while the developer develops from state grants, rental income, and reduced local taxes. This locks the city into an undervalued assessment for 10 full years, long after the property becomes profitable. And there's no mechanism to reevaluate the property once it's finished or fully occupied. Reasonable fixes that I can see to consider, I'm not here to stop the progress, I'm here to make sure that it's fair. If these concerns can be addressed with clear objective solutions, I would be open to supporting a revised agreement. Some reasonable fixes could include reassessing the property upon completion and occupancy certification, so we're taxing the true market value, phasing out the abatement after five years instead of 10, trying tax benefits to perform, tying tax benefits to performance standards, such as maintaining at least 80% occupancy, verifying that the units are truly designated for healthcare workers, and providing annual reports to the city on rental income and assessed values. So in closing, this project has potential, but the agreement as written heavily favors the developer and shifts the tax burden onto the people of Waterbury. We can support redevelopment and protect taxpayers at the same time. And all I'm asking is for balance, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you all for your time.
Next speaker from 585 Park Road, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 585 Park Road. First of all, I would like to thank our military, our veterans that are here tonight, and all the veterans in the city of Waterbury. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do our civic duty right now. So even though tomorrow, for some people, it's a day off, we should never think of it as a day off. We should think of remembering those every single day, and doing whatever we can for veterans every day. First of all, I would like to ask that, there's a lot of items on the agenda. I'm not going to go through all of them, but to pass the agenda, the main reason why I felt it necessary to come here tonight is we're losing a lot of great people that have done great things for this city over the last 10, 15, 20 years. We're getting some new people. But for the people that we're losing, keep your heads up high. You know, what some of you, and most of you, I should say, have gone through in the last few years, the people in this city, and you're seeing it all over America, have spoken, the name-calling, the rhetoric that is going on, people have had it. People want people to serve them and get things done. And all you people that are leaving here in the next few weeks, and the people that are coming on, I want you to remember that the people in this city are grateful, and the people that we're losing have held their heads up high, attacked on a weekly basis. I call it Page Six in the tabloids, because that's what it is. You know, a lot gets said every week, and the nonsense that goes on every week. You know, if they have something legitimate or some way to help this city move forward, why aren't they here? They're not. They want to attack the people that are here, doing what we elected them to do. And it's not right. So I would say to those people that we're losing, I'm sorry that you're leaving, but you're leaving the city a lot better off than what we inherited 20, 30 years ago. And for the financial people that are back here, it's not right. For the attacks that they take on every single week, they answer every question every member or citizen in this city has had. And to have them get attacked on a weekly basis, not to mention attacked by a person who doesn't even live in the city of Waterbury, but has a lot to say, but can't back up anything that he says on a weekly basis. It's wrong. And I'm almost at the point of starting a podcast to promote the positives that come out of this city, and to, you know, bring people on that work hard, that try to promote this city on a weekly basis. You know, and I saw some of that. You know, and I saw some of that this past weekend.
One minute.
We have a lot of city employees and a lot of citizens in this city that came together to bring food to the less fortunate people that we have in our school system, you know, because our politicians can't seem in Washington to get along and do the right thing. You know, people always badmouth this city, along with the two people that... The propaganda every week. But this city came through, like it always does. The amount of food that people gave for our kids in our school system that might go without a meal. I was happy to be there this weekend when the trucks pulled in. And it's amazing what this city does. And the news and everybody, they like to bring us down.
That's time, if you can finish up.
But all I got to say is, it's got to stop. And I'm going to keep coming to all these meetings and promoting what is right with this city and keep moving this city forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next speaker from 38 Gates Avenue, Renee Mason Craig.
Good evening, everyone. Renee Mason Craig, 38 Gates Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705. Congratulations to all the alders that were re-elected and my best wishes to the ones that were not. I'm sure that, you know, you'll still be around doing great work. So I just want to say thank you. I came here tonight not to speak on any specific agenda item, but just to share a little bit about my thoughts about encouraging you all to increase funding for city boards and commissions. So I do currently sit as the president of the Litter Control and Beautification Commission here in Waterbury. As many of you, I'm sure, know, at least our commission, we don't have any funding. Our budget, we don't have one. I have recently created one, and I do want to say thank you to the city departments that are related to litter control. They have the budget. They've been looking over it. We're in talks. They've been really well about that. But I just wanted to bring this to Board of Alders' attention for you all just to consider maybe increasing that budget for boards and commissions. My phone has not stopped ringing since I became president. It was ringing a lot before, but now it's really ringing. And people are looking for more. I have the schools reaching out. You know, they want to do work with the kids, which I think would be great. We've been talking about more marketing, billboards, just more to really engage with the people, like the woman shared earlier. You know, I think it's super important that you all are in the communities that you're serving. We hear a lot about the people aren't coming out, the people aren't voting. But my question to you all is, do you know the people, right? And so I think we need more effort from the city and the departments to actually know the people, to go to where they are. So I'm hoping that with an increase, or just any amount of funding for the boards and commissions, that that'll help. And that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 10 Martin Street, Rafael Felician Romang.
Thank you so much, Rafael Felician Romang, 15 Martin Street. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Alderman-elect for the 5th District. The 5th District is here in force. And to the previous speaker's comment of if you care, why aren't you here? We're here. I'm here to speak on one agenda item, item number 17. I would ask this body to just consider, if you can possibly, around this abatement, to just allow the two weeks. If the new alders are going to be sat, and this is a big financial decision for the city, this seems to be a hot button issue for the constituents and residents, allow the new body to be sat. Allow for us to have that opportunity to take our stab at it. And I know that there might be an argument or an agreement, or someone say, hey, it's the former St. Mary's. We weren't getting any taxes on that property, right? It was a nonprofit. It was the Catholic Diocese. But I would challenge us still as a city and as alders, once we get in that chamber, let's start exploring pilots, payment in lieu of taxes with nonprofits, just like they're doing down in New Haven and other municipalities. If there's nonprofit entities, including dioceses, that are getting properties that are non-taxed in this city, the city, through the administration, we can empower them as alders to enter into pilot programs, payment in lieu of taxes agreements. So then we can start getting taxes on these properties that are sitting without paying taxes. But I would just employ you as alders and as a future alder to please just consider giving us a couple more weeks, allowing the new body to be sat, so we can have our opportunity at it. I would like to publicly congratulate those who will be returning from both sides of the aisle. Congratulations. I enjoyed my time on the trail with you and those who were so kind to me, including you, Mr. President, and all of you on the body who I've had time to connect with. I will publicly state, I have not heard from the administration directly yet, except for Nick, the mayor's aide. I have not heard directly from the mayor or anyone from the leadership of this party to congratulate me. I have heard from my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, the Republican Party. I thank each and every one of you. The real reason for my attending here tonight, though, and I miss the honoring of those who are outgoing, I did want to come to give my thanks to those who are stepping down and those who have helped me since I moved back home five years ago. I want to thank Mary Grace Cavalo and all your hard work that you've done in the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association. You have been a pillar to the Brooklyn community and neighborhood that I grew up in since I was little. I thank you for all of your hard work. Alderwoman, you have truly been a beacon for the Brooklyn neighborhood that I champion. So do the Latinos, the Jamaicans, the Haitians. Thank you for all of your hard work. To Ruben Rodriguez, thank you for being a commissioner representing the Puerto Rican community in the 2nd District with pride. We really, truly appreciate you, Ruben. Thank you for your service. It shows the importance of one vote. Thank you so much for your time. To Mike Salvio, who was one of the first people to sign our petition when we were egg hunting with George Nujame at the Nujame Foundation. Thank you for standing up for the Puerto Rican community and standing up to the former administration and saying the Puerto Ricans need a Puerto Rican Day Parade and Festival. I'll never forget you. Thank you so much for that, sir. I truly, truly appreciate and value that. Alderman Dorsol, thank you for all your work with the Housing Authority, and thank you for all that you've done in the first. And Alderman Lopez, who isn't here tonight, Hispanic Coalition and all of his advice and feedback. I thank him. But I'm specifically here to honor and lift up a man who doesn't know that I'm going to do this today. But in the spirit of my mentor, Thomas Conway, who he challenged twice for state representative, it has been the honor and privilege this cycle to get to know this man. And since I've moved home watching this alderman meeting, I want to pause to honor a man whose dedication and service to this city will leave a lasting remark and marks on this city. Though Jack Elsif is a Republican, he has always had an independent voice, a representative of all people, never afraid to question, to challenge, and demand transparency. His years of inspiring common sense spending and practical solutions have made this city a stronger place and more accountable. Before his time on the council, Jack served with distinction on the Board of Education, where his commitment to students, families, and educators set the tone for the type of leader that he would become. Whether it's helping Santa Claus during the holidays, and he knows what I mean, bringing joy to students and children everywhere, to standing up for taxpayers in this chamber, Jack has always been guided by a deep love for this city of Waterbury.
One minute.
Jack, on a personal level, I want to come this evening to thank you personally in front of everyone, because I know you won't be here when I get sworn in, and to honor your legacy and the legacy of my mentor, Tom Conway, who believed in lifting up others, even if they are from the other side. Thank you, Alderman Elsif, for all of your service to this city, to the 5th District, and to me personally. Thank you, my friend, and thank you all for this.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 26 Maywood Avenue, Carla Desposito.
Good evening, Carla Desposito, 26 Maywood Street. I saw that item number 2 on the agenda today is referred to the Finance Committee, and it was submitted, the 10 points, by me. I don't know how government works. Like I told you last time when I was here last month, I only found out that if you submit ideas 11 days before a meeting, they'll get on the agenda. Putting it into a Finance Committee seems stupid to me. I thought you guys would just talk about every item, and then if it needs to go to committee, you put it there. But, oh, I don't know how this government... I don't know how it runs. I don't know the organization. I see we get a choice, a chance to... Robert Rules speak our little four minutes or whatever it is. You guys are not replying at this time, so it's kind of useless. Yeah, I am here for item 2. I will reiterate, dissolve the districts. People here talking about Wilby High School. I guess the people, the only three aldermen who are living around all Wilby High School really care about the financing. The rest of you guys are in your districts, and you don't give a crap about the other ones. So I'm against division. I wish we'd go back to no five districts. Top 15 people who get the top votes are the aldermen for all the town of Waterbury. 2, get rid of Robert Rules, that oppresses freedom of speech with its time limits. 3, lower the peddler's license fee from $575 a year to $20 a year. 4, institute a dollar tax upon every property in Waterbury, divide it equally into two separate dedicated accounts, one for new construction and/or repair of sidewalks, of retaining walls that are edged along sidewalks. Second one, four new sidewalks and curbs, or repairing with deteriorated ones. And simultaneously start a summer program for youngsters of Waterbury to actively participate in these construction projects. 5, there was a woman here with beautification and litter control. This might go with her. Institute a curbside cleanup program that uses a preset list of people to call, clean up and to come clean up unkept properties, you know, specifically the sidewalks and the curbs along retaining walls that are all growing weeds and have litter and debris. And call a preset, whoever's on the top of the list, call them up, come and have them clean it up, pay them, and then tax the property owner. 6, set aside every Sunday afternoon, April through October, Flea Market Day. Downtown folks can set up a small table to splay and sell their items on the green. 7, change the laws that people can put fencing right up on the edge of their property line. 8, get heat up those metal benches, beds in the jail, because, yeah, you freeze in there. 9, erect two-sided corkboard bulletin boards, one side for government, other side for the people to pin up their own notices. Put them at the parks and outside Town Hall. 10, provide office space at the Town Hall building here for aldermen to rotate around Monday through Friday, manning the office, so that a citizen can come in and speak with them and not have to wait for a meeting or have to call them and not see them face to face. So these particular... None of these were written particularly under item 2. It just said, you know, some random group or whatever. You don't even have enough agendas printed, so I don't even have one in hand, which is kind of disappointing. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker today.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda is going to be going into an executive session. So with that, Alderman Dorsol, is there a motion to accuse ourselves in the executive session? Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, second. Motion made and seconded. We're going into executive session to discuss the pending litigation with Prospect Medical Holdings Incorporated and Prospect Waterbury Incorporated versus the city of Waterbury. We're going to have Chief of Staff Joe Gary, Finance Director Mike LeBlanc, and Waterbury Corp. Consul come into the meeting. So we'll be in the Democratic Caucus Room. Excuse me, one second. We got a motion and a second. I'm going to get all those in favor. All those in favor of entering into the executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to return to regular order of business?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy, motion made in second and all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we are back to our original business. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, October 20th, regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy? Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with Disabilities Act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with disabilities act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. There's no mayor's report. Before we recess into committees, there's a couple items that we have to take care of. First of all, in front of you, item packet is the item number 12. It was a placeholder. You now have the actual packet and the actual application for the $10 million grant to renovate St. Lucie's. So that was a placeholder, you guys have that. Item number 26 is being withdrawn. Item 26 is being withdrawn. And in front of you, you have item 35. It is the Tilcon Milling and Paving Program Amendment 3. There was some American with disabilities act sidewalks that had to be modified and required for the roads to be milled. So there was an overage of $81,368.67. This amendment would take care of that overage. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 35 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of adding item 35 to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and item 36 is added to the agenda, it'll be taken up by intergovernmental. With that, we will recess into committees and we will start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order.
a lot of questions, you know, we have a lot of stuff in this paperwork, important things, you know, we're talking almost here, just 36, almost some million-dollar projects, you know. So the citizens are, even ourselves, you know, we have to read through it in less than one hour. So that's my only comment, Mr. President, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Zimmerman.
I retract, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adding item 36 to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and item 36 is added to the agenda, it'll be taken up by intergovernmental. With that, we will recess into committees and we will start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services agreement for senior nutrition services between the City of Waterbury and New Opportunities Incorporated. This project consists of the contractor providing nutritious meals to 50 seniors at Waterbury Senior Center every Tuesday and Thursday of each week as submitted by Myra Lavassier, Director of Municipal Agent and Waterbury Senior Senator, Center. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is...
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Myra Lavassier, I'm the Director of the Waterbury Senior Center as well as the Municipal Agent for the City of Waterbury. Is there any questions that I may be able to answer for you? Yes, so we are exercising some option periods that we had in the original contract with New Opportunities. So 5,200 meals is what we're projecting to feed our seniors from now until November 30th, 2026. The cost of that is $9.73 a meal for a grand total of $50,596. My pleasure.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you so much for helping to feed our seniors.
Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following canceled electrical permits as submitted by Frank Baker, building official. Valiant Energy, HVAC, permit fee $292.50. Tesla Energy, electrical fee $337.50. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refund.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Are there any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter to allow WDC to manage and administer, sorry, the Hayden Homestead Park renovation project pursuant to master municipal agreement between the Waterbury Development Corporation and the City of Waterbury. At this time, the estimated cost for the project is $720,656 as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yeah, we don't normally do this, but go ahead. Yeah, no, go ahead. Alderman Salville, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy has a question.
Good, yes.
Good evening, James Nardozzi, Waterbury Development Corporation. Good, good evening. Just talk a little louder.
Oh, sorry about that.
Alderman Elsapp can't hear you.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, were these funds previously allocated?
Well, yes, and there's a 50% grant, I'm on the agenda later on, on tonight's program. So we have an opportunity from the state of Connecticut, from DEEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, for a 50% matching grant to be used at Hayden Park. The other 50% of the funds are from the Hayden Family Trust Fund, of which we have those funds, they're legally bound, they can only use at the park. If the PAL is approved and the grant application is approved, that we're authorized to apply, we would, assuming that we would be the recipient of the grant, then the Budget Director, Ms. Gary, would then have to come back to the board here and ask for the board's authorization to spend the money in the Hayden Trust Fund, which would make our 50% match. So there would be no request for any bonds, there would be no request for any new expenditures or anything out of the operating budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter to allow WDC to manage and administer the Willby High School Football Field Renovations Project pursuant to master municipal agreement between the Waterbury Development Corporation and the City of Waterbury as submitted by Roland Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Good question.
Yes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, the Honorable Mayor, President and Alderman, Ron Casella from WDC.
Thank you. Question, does this project include renovations to the track at the school?
No, the football field only.
Only the football field?
Correct. So it's renovation of the football field, turf fields, irrigation, raising the grade, more site work.
Have there been any discussions regarding any renovation to the track at Willby?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes. We, um...
Can you explain why?
Alderman Weaver?
Can you explain why you're going to spend all this money to do the football field and you're going to leave the track the way it is?
At this point, the budget that they had of $3 million, minus the A&E services, the top priority was for the football field at this point, to get that field to be used. Right now, it's in dire need of support to have it work properly when there's like rainstorms or irrigation problems. So we're trying to raise the grade and do storm drainage work to make that field operational at all times. So right now, it was for getting that field up to park, so that's what we're spending the $3 million on.
Are there plans in the future to do anything with the track field?
It could be, but at this time, we're only concentrating right now on this football field at this time.
Alderman Weaver? Done?
I know it's our last night, everybody, but let's try to stay within our committees. I know it's our last night.
Alderman Elsapp?
This thing is, somebody's been playing with it. Thank you. Is there any reason why we couldn't look into this? The equipment's going to be there doing all of this excavation work and whatever's necessary for the football field. Wouldn't it be a lot cheaper and a little smarter to try to get the track done at the same time, particularly since you're going to be working with the runoff and stuff like that?
Alderman, Jim Nardozzi again, Waterbury Development Corporation. The State Bond Commission, due to the efforts, and we're very appreciative of the efforts of Representative Butler, allocated $3 million only for this project. We could postpone the project and we could seek additional funding. This was not a normal grant program. This was a state earmark through the efforts of our representative. We would have to go back and quite frankly, it would be millions more, we could come back with an estimate for that. I don't disagree with anybody here, it would be good to do the track, it would be great to do the whole field over. Again, we could withdraw this, we could try to go back to the State Bond Commission and ask for more money on this, but again, this was not like a DEEP or a DECD or a DAS grant program. It was an earmark specifically for this.
Isn't there some way though, we could tie it and piggyback in there somehow? Because it's going to cost so much more money to start from scratch again. It's probably 30% savings if we just piggybacked it in.
We could, then my recommendation would be, we'll withdraw this, we'll go back and price everything out, and then we will come back to the board and report, and I know the new board would be impaneled, but then we'll report on what the total cost of the project would be.
Well, if nothing else, I'd like to see the efficiency. I mean, this is like digging up the street to put a water main in and paving it, and then digging up the street to put a gas main in the next day. So let's use a little head here, we're going to have to do this anyways, let's try to see if we can...
So I'm going to run, I'm going to interrupt Alderman Elsapp, so it's, this project's been so long, we do, we do run the risk of the state taking the money back and not reallocating it to us. So I think the better course of action would be to start the field, and obviously Representative Butler could go back and try to get more money, but at this point, it's been such a long time, the state is basically, I believe, why we're acting is, we need to use the money so they do not pull the money back to us. At this point, the $3 million can only cover, with the massive drainage problem up there, it can only cover the football field right now. Not to say that down the road, that, you know, Representative Butler can't go for more, but right now, we do run the risk of getting that money taken away.
I'm not saying it all stop the football field. While they could start it, negotiate with the contractors that are with the equipment and say, hey, if you did this, what's it going to cost us? It doesn't have to be part of the same grant, we could still do the thing, but we got everything right there, ready to go.
Joe Gary, Chief of Staff. Alderman, I know if you're aware, the track is approximately 300 yards east of the football field, it's not connected to the football field, are you aware of that? Or are any of them aware of that? It's 300 yards away.
Exact distances and stuff, but I'm sure it's a lot closer than the guy's garage, who's going to have all the equipment up there.
I would guess, I would agree with Mr. Nardozzi that the price would at least double, it would at least be $6 million. Mr. Nardozzi's point, if you want to pull it, you can pull it and go back to the state, see if you can get more money, but right now, we had $3 million, we met with Representative Butler, met with the athletic director, we met with the principal at the time of Willby, and they had wanted to focus the money on the football field. If you want to do different, then that's your pleasure and we could do different, see if we can get additional funding or risk losing the $3 million we currently have.
Alderman Nijay? That's okay.
You know, for someone that's coached there for a decade with a local youth group here, you know, we could definitely use some funding towards the Willby Fields, because I've been there when it's rained and the flooding. But here's some of my concerns, I understand that the track is completely separate from the field. What is the timeframe we have to, if we voted yes on this, that we have to use this money versus saying, hey, let's see, is it, do we have to use this money by like, say, next June, the next fiscal cycle, where we have time to possibly do research on what the track would cost?
I couldn't answer that question right now, Alderman, but we could engage the state and see what the parameters are.
So if we were to withdraw this for until the next meeting, would it hinder anything on the timing?
This is just a project authorization agreement tonight, this isn't to move forward, this is to allow WDC to manage the project, we haven't gone out to architectural and so forth, so it would, yes, it would delay it, to what extent?
Also, if the board's wishes are that we pursue other funding, I still need a PAL so that I can go out and do that.
So you need this approval in order to go work at...
Right, without a PAL, I don't have the authorization to work on any project. So that's, I mean, I need the PAL no matter what.
Got it.
So even if you pull, I mean, approve the PAL, and then if you want me to go find other funding, I'll go find other funding, I'd have to come back to the board for your approval to build anything anyways, and to expend any funding that we do get.
I just want to make a comment that, you know, thank God the political season's over and I won't be accused of trying to hold this up, because that's not what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to make an efficiency move. And I know that's kind of Greek around here, so we won't talk about it. So, just so, I'm not trying to stop this field by any means.
To do anything beyond the scope of the football field.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and listening very intently, I think we're all saying the same thing in a sense of, we're very appreciative of the grant that we have received from the state, but we know, and I think all of us pretty much know, the condition of Willby and the fields, and we want to see as much work done as possible, so I would be in favor of the current PAL, but I am insistent that we get an estimate of the cost of repairing the track in addition. I think that would be very important, because, you know, who knows how long that would go un-repaired? I mean, if we, hopefully this project will go through, football field will be repaired, but we don't want the track to go too long without also being repaired.
Alderman Nijay?
Thank you for recognizing me. Quick question, there's two fields there, there's the lower bottom one, and then on the, I guess we'll call it the second level after the parking lot to the right.
So as you pull in your first driveway, that first field you see with the press box and bleachers, that's actually what's considered the main football field, where Willby would play their home games if the field was in proper condition. The lower field, way down and back with the track, is actually a practice field.
Correct.
And for Willby's track field, I'm, I don't know, make this, will they have a track program?
Yeah.
So they have a current track program, just wasn't sure if they have boys and girls or just one. I also want to remind you, I was contacted by a reporter today from Hearst, and we have a boys' baseball field, a girl's softball field, probably two baseball fields and one softball field, they're also in need of repair. I mean, Willby is a huge complex, I couldn't even guess the acreage up there. Opened in the mid to late 70s, and this probably would be the first renovation of any level that we've done to any of these fields up there, just like Crosby, you know, Kennedy's had a synthetic turf field installed a few years ago, Crosby has his synthetic football field. Yeah, up in Buck... Correct, up in Bucksville, but it opened in the mid to late 70s.
With that, as if you're asking for funding on the track portion, which obviously then there's an inner field on that lower part, I mean, obviously that has to cost some money as well to irrigate it, because that got very wet and soggy. So the whole, that whole general area has to be redone.
It's more than likely I'm correct, that's a total renovation down below. This is, you know, just basically the first step, there's a $3 million funding source, it's the first step to start with the main field where they would play their varsity games.
And I've definitely walked it, I think it's more than 300 yards.
I just, the point of...
It's a long walk.
I didn't know if a lot of the Aldermen thought, in a lot of cases, you see the track right around the main field.
Like Crosby or something.
These are not connected, they're disconnected.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, so with this current project authorization letter, if there are any excess funds, could those funds be used towards the track, or would you have to go to the state to apply for a completely different set of funds?
DEEP is the administrator of the grant, so we would have to go back to DEEP and just ask them if surplus funds could be spent on the track.
Okay.
I would highly doubt they would say no, but we would still, there's still a mechanism, a legal mechanism that we would have to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the CT DEEP...
the CT DEEP Urban Green and Community Garden Grant Application Hayden Homestead Park Renovation Project as submitted by James Nardozzi, Executive Director, WDC. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer within the Water Department's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 20th, 2026 in the amount of $850,000 as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget and Development Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Alderman, need Jane?
Good evening, Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight.
Thank you for being here, Sarah. So the whole water main break fiasco that happened was a total of $940,000?
That was the estimate. We expect the total cost of repairs to be in the area of $940,000. I could just give you a breakdown as mentioned in the budget memo. Before the emergency occurred on Huntington Avenue, our water emergency repairs capital project had a balance of approximately $533,000. Then at the time that this memo was drafted, the balance in the project was just slightly under $273,000 because some of the expenses were encumbered. And we, due to the fact that that was $260,000 that was encumbered, this transfer would help in funding all of the repairs related to the emergency plus providing funding to be available within the account once all of the emergency expenses are paid for because this is, this could be used in the future. We typically like to have a balance of at least a few hundred thousand dollars in the emergency repair account. So it would leave us with a balance of about $445,000 to be used in the future. So the total transfer amount is 850, but it wasn't all needed for this emergency. It will leave us with a balance to be used into the future. Again, the total is in the area of about $940,000 for all of the repairs. And if you have more specific questions about the actual repairs, Brad Malley, our Superintendent of Water is here to answer that, but that covers the funding piece of it.
How'd you know that was next?
Figured you were probably more interested in that.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, actually. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Board, Bradley Malley, Superintendent of Water.
Thank you for being here. Obviously, this was a 30-inch pipe. Is that the pipe that leads into the reservoir coming in?
That pipe does leave the treatment plant, goes through Watertown and takes a right at Caner Tech and heads up towards the north side of the city.
From my knowledge, there's about three major sizes of piping that goes through the city, this as being one of the bigger ones. How many different arteries of 30-inch pipes are there in the city? I'm just curious.
There's currently about 400 miles of transmission main underground in the city. I would say a third of that is 24 inches or bigger.
A third of it?
Yeah.
Is 24 inches or bigger?
You have to consider, the treatment plant is 10 miles away. Leaving the treatment plant is a 36-inch low-pressure main, gravity-fed main, a 42-inch high-pressure main, and a 30-inch high-pressure main that goes through Watertown. So that encumbers a lot of that distance just from Watertown, or from Thomason to the city.
And with this repair, how big, how, how, what was the, the spread of how big the repair was that we had to fix on the piping? Was it about 20, 30? How many?
About two feet.
Two feet?
Yeah. It was an appearance that exists on the pipe called an air relief valve blew off of the pipe. There was no way to isolate that section of pipe at the time without installing new valves. We had to install new valves in order to shut the water down live because the other mitigating factor is, as you know, Thomason Avenue, water main is down. If you've driven that way, that 42-inch line is laying on the side of the road. So that only left us with the low-pressure, gravity-fed main that feeds the city, the lower levels where we're at right now, and the 30-inch high-pressure main which feeds all the way up towards Career, Cheshire, up that way. So we weren't able to willfully take the 30-inch main out of service for any length of time without disrupting water to the city over, it would have been 40 to 50% of the city would have lost water during that time if we had not put the valves in. So it wasn't an option for me. I didn't see it as a viable path forward. So that's why we had to purchase all the things we needed to purchase. Otherwise, the city could have been without water for three to four days while we made the repair.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further discussion, Alderman Mosley?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you. You've helped to really carry our city through a tough time over the last two months and we thank you and your department for all the hard work and all the efforts with helping to get us back on track with our water systems. I just want to say, you know, whatever support that you all need to continue doing the great work that you're doing, I'm certainly in support of. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mike?
For?
Alderman. Thank you for recognizing me. Why I have you here, Alderman Zimmerman had asked at our last meeting, I know I spoke to you, an estimate on, I know you don't have the final numbers, but just an estimate on the break and what you think the, the final number will fall between?
I think the final number will fall between $900,000 and $1 million. All the invoices are not in. The larger things have been encumbered already, but we still have quite a bit of things to come in still, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Good evening, Alderman.
Item number 16, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a construction contract for North Main Street and West Main Street water main replacement submitted by Roland Casella, Project Manager, WDC. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Is there any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 19, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a sub-award with Yale University for a comprehensive approach to endemic screening and same-day treatment compass as submitted by Aisling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Health. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. The big, it's huge. It's down here. Do you need it? Okay. Item number 21, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment Number One to Construction Contract for the Medway Road Drainage Improvements Between the City of Waterbury and Gerber Construction Incorporated as submitted by Roy Kavanoff, City Engineer, Public Works Department. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Standing Committee, Alderman Dorso, are you?
I'm going to recuse myself from the vote because there's a refund going to the Waterbury Housing Authority.
Okay. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $32,257.61 as submitted by Cassie M. Gorman, CCMC Tax Collector. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a, a second? Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second? Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Board of Alderman's regularly scheduled meetings for calendar year 26 as submitted by Angela M. Battle, Assistant City Clerk, Office of the City Clerk. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a memorandum of understanding with Torrington Area Health District for Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Subrecipient Services as submitted by Aisling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a community investment fund 2025 Round Eight application for St. Lucy's Community Health Resource Center as submitted by Aisling McGuckin, RN, MSN, MPH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Good evening, Aisling McGuckin, Director of Health. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question because I remember voting on this a while ago with St. Lucy's. Why has it just come across our desk right now? Can you help us like understand the timeline? Because I, I understand, I think we need to have it filled out by November 28th. Is that what I read?
Yes. So this is the second submission of the same funding, to the same funding source. We last applied in 2023. We didn't, we weren't funded at that time, so we're resubmitting for this funding round.
Okay. And then I wasn't able to read through all this. So if we are awarded the $10 million, is there anything in here where the city needs to match anything or?
There's no match required.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
I'll be the, thank you, first of all, thank you for coming. We'll be the, so I know you said 2023, you kind of did it, didn't went through. What are the chances now to get it done?
The last time we applied, we got pretty specific feedback about what didn't work in our application. And at the time we applied last, we also didn't have any funding in hand apart from the ARPA investment that had purchased, that we had used to purchase the property. Since then, we've been awarded $5 million in congressionally directed spending through Senators Blumenthal and Murphy's offices. So we have some funds already kind of sitting in our bank, able to show that we've made efforts towards seeking funds. And we're going to utilize those funds to get started with the project, but we're putting that up as evidence that the city is serious about investing in this property.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have one question. So I know we've been applying for this project for a bit. Is there anything in this submission that is substantially different from the original vision?
I think the fact that we have funds that have already been awarded. At the time we applied the last time, we only had made it through two, two steps in that funding cycle. And I think that they were a little dubious that we were going to get those funds because they, because they hadn't already been awarded.
Yep.
With those funds already in hand, it makes us a little bit more viable or competitive. I think another difference is that we are, we're kind of phasing the implementation of the plans, which I think will respond to one of the critiques of the original application, that it seemed like we were biting off a whole lot without, you know, evidence that we had fully thought out how we were going to do it in terms of a timeline. So our, our timeline in this application, you can see, has a lot more detail about engaging providers, working through a process of, you know, putting out an RFP, a realistic timeline to get those RFP responses back and, you know, solicit the engagement of a community-based advisory committee. So we have a lot more specificity in our application because we got the feedback the first time that we submitted. We've used that feedback to inform this submission.
And, and the target communities that we're looking to help maintain their health are still relatively the same from the first application?
It is. It's not really changed. We looked at the data, updated our application with updated data from 2023.
Sure.
And a lot of the same disparities still persist in the north end.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 12? Appreciate it. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with SLR International Corporation for On-Call Environmental Services and AHERA Inspections as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. I should say that this and the other items from the Department of Ed were approved at their last regular meeting. Any, can I get a motion for item number 13?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again, what you say with regards to the Board of Education?
Alderman, just speaking, just speaking to the mic, just, yeah, just so they, they're home.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Can you repeat what you just said about the last part, the Board of Education?
That the items from the Board of Ed were approved at their last regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I second.
Any discussion on item number 13? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 14, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment One to Professional Services Agreement with Connecticut Rise Network, Inc. for Data Hub Setup Configuration and Implementation for an, for an additional school as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 15, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a data privacy agreement with Hill for Literacy, Inc., a consultative partner to the Connecticut Department of Education at no cost as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 17, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a tax assessment agreement with K-Bar Development Corp. for Phase One and for Phase One Redevelopment of 55 Cole Street Properties, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. LeBlanc. Let's see, on 17, is there anyone here from Kbar?
No, there is not representative from Kbar here this evening.
Okay. And with regards to this abatement, 10 years, isn't that a little steep? My question is, have we ever done this before?
We've, there have been tax stabilization agreements on other housing development projects that have actually gone 15 years.
And do you have examples of those properties that you just mentioned? Can you tell me which properties?
The one that comes to mind is Warner Gardens. There was Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay. Now, with regards to this abatement, what's the benefit the city gets?
If I may, just to provide a little bit of background, because I know there were some comments earlier this evening in regards to the value that was established. And if I may, just to give you some background information, and then I can certainly circle back to the benefits of the city. But the 3.5 million market value was determined following an analysis by our Assessor's Office of residential apartment buildings, including low-income subsidized housing and privately owned market rate properties here in the city. The sample ranged in values as low as $1,350,000 to a high of $4,745,000. The average unit price of the sample equated to an approximate market value of $75,000 per unit. And based on the proposed development for the former St. Mary's properties, Kbar is proposing to develop 47 rental units within the buildings over there. And at $75,000 per unit, this equates to a value of $3,525,000. Kbar had approached the city through the administration, Mayor Paneruski's office, seeking a tax stabilization arrangement that would allow for a reduction in taxes in consideration of the fact that there will be rent caps on some of the units within the development due to the assistance that Kbar is applying for through the Department of Housing. So there would be restricted rents, again, on a segment of the units that would remain in place for 20 years. So Kbar, again, had requested assistance through an abatement to allow for the, the development to provide a net operating income that would allow for the ability to repay the private investment that's going into the property. There's proposed to be a $4 million private investment going into the development of the property that would be leveraged with the application that is currently into the state for the $9.4 million approximately of assistance. So an overall investment going into the property of the 13, of $13 million. Again, that's not a basis, though, of the ultimate value. These properties have been abandoned for a very long period of time or vacant. There's a significant amount of abatement and redevelopment that is going to need to go into establishing the 47 units. Again, this is only Phase One of the proposed development. Phase Two is proposed to be the development of a new building that would provide additional units on the adjacent lot on the East Main Street side. So in regards to this revised tax stabilization, tax stabilization that has been submitted for consideration, at the full assessment, 70% value of $2,450,000, it's proposed to be taxed at 40% of that full, 47% of that full assessment in the first year. That, at our current mill rate, would generate a property tax in the approximate amount of $52,000. That taxable percentage would increase incrementally over the 10-year period, capping out at 77% in the last year of the 10-year proposed tax stabilization agreement. In that 10th year, the tax, property tax payment at our current mill rate would be in the range of $85,000. So over that 10-year period, again, the, the tax payment would incrementally increase from $52,000 to $85,000. At full taxation of that assessment, at our current mill rate, you would be in the neighborhood of $110,000 for an annual property tax payment. So the, the proposed abatement initially starts in the range of $60,000 and then incrementally decreases to $25,000 in the last year of the 10-year abatement. What the city gets in return is the development of a property that has historically produced no taxes, no property tax income to the city of Waterbury. It's been vacant for, I believe, at least 20 years. It provides the development to bring needed housing. This is an integral component of the downtown redevelopment, but most importantly, provides for accessible healthcare housing to healthcare workers in this downtown area of the city of Waterbury and certainly, you know, with the benefits of being adjacent to St. Mary's Hospital.
Okay. So if we, if this goes through, can you just tell me layman's terms, how much is the city going to lose? Do you have that calculation?
Yeah, I can do that for you. So full taxation over the 10-year period at the current mill rate would be approximately 1.1 million. And approximately the, the next, next net taxation, not putting all the 10 years together, would be approximately in the neighborhood of what the payments would be. I would peg at approximately $600,000, perhaps a little bit more. So the abatement that you would be looking at over a 10-year period would be approximately $500,000 or $50,000 a year averaged out over the course of the year. The 10 years, I believe approximately a little bit less. Again, only from the standpoint that the first-year abatement starts at $60,000 and then would decrease over the 10-year period, going down to $25,000. So on the high end, I believe you'd be looking at approximately $500,000 over the course of 10 years.
And then, from what I understand, under the abatement agreement, are there any provisions for tax recapture? Like if the project fails?
If the project fails, there, the term escapes me at the moment, but there's a reverter clause in the property where the property would revert back to the city. There's also performance guarantees that are, are tied to the, the purchase and sale agreement. There's also conditions of, of components of the agreement where, whereby the developer would, would need to, you know, guarantee certain things particularly providing the accessible housing to healthcare workers. In all of those instances, to the extent that there's failure to comply, there are certainly provisions for a period of time to cure an issue that may come about. But, you know, certainly there are the protections in place in the agreement, both the tax stabilization agreement as well as the purchase and sale agreement, where in the extent that there was a, a, a failure to comply, there would be an opportunity absolutely to avoid the tax assessment agreement.
Okay. Were there any other developers besides Kbar?
Yes, so, and actually, this board had previously approved the, the sale of St. Mary's to Kbar Development, but through the RFP process, there were four respondents to that RFP at the time. And it was Kbar Development that had proposed the highest purchase price at that 1.6 million.
Well, one other comment I have is that if a company is looking for a tax abatement, shouldn't a representative be here to answer questions from that company? That's what I just have to say, and that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 17? Alderman, oh, sorry, actually.
That's right. No, let the Alderman go first, I just have, yep.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question to you is, at this, right now, how it stands, the building, without no repairs, nothing being done to it, what would be the value of that property?
I can assure you, it's not the value that's on the assessor's records at this point because it was previously owned by the Archdiocese and it was an exempt property. And I don't imagine, I would, actually, at this point, I would guesstimate that the value that's in the assessor's records was back when it was a fully occupied and operational school. And I do not believe the assessment has been adjusted since that time, again, due to the fact that it's in an exempt status. That obviously would change with the sale of the property. And I referenced earlier as far as where the methodology came about in regards to establishing the fair market value of 3.5 million.
Okay. My second question to you is, if, so right now, if we approve this, and I guess the company haven't, does the company already have the state money approved for this project? Or they're waiting for this to go through? Or how that is working so far?
They, they are, what I would reference is at the 90% completion stage of the application. There's a multiple-phase process that this developer is going through with the Department of Housing. And this is, at the end of the day, I believe, a component of the finalization of, of the, the application and ultimate consideration for award.
And I ask this because my, I wanted to know if, if it doesn't go through with the state, the state doesn't approve it, why would this happen? Why would they get the money to, you know, do this? Or what the company is planning to do if the state doesn't approve the, I think it was 9 million? If I'm mistaken?
9.4 million. But the, the RFP was initially issued with an understanding coming from the state that there was 20 million that was ultimately available for workforce, how the, housing, healthcare housing. It was later determined that although it would be great for one developer to receive the full 20 million, it was, at the end of the day, not going to happen. And we incorporated that in the, the further evaluation with the respondents to the RFP at the time. From what I understand, and I, I don't know, I don't know what the makeup is of the 9.4 million, how much of that is coming from the initial 24, 20 million that the state had authorized. But the, the development of this project is heavily contingent on securing the, the state assistance projected at this point in the amount of 9.4 million. That number through this process, and I haven't been heavily involved with it, but from references that have been made, you know, there, there's adjustments in the grant that are being made based on what the Department of Housing's understanding is on various components of the project.
And one more last question to you is, just so people will know, the repairs that are going to be done to these buildings will not reflect on the price of this building in the long run. And that means in the value of this building. So let's say we have $13 million in repairs. It will not increase the value of the building. If that, I'm correct on that?
So at, and the valuations of these properties are largely contingent upon what the rent revenue is net of operating costs for the apartment complex, if you will. That drives, at the end of the day, a net return. And it's that net return that is a factor into the Assessor's Office determining what the, the value of the property is. So the, the references that I've made are based on actual properties here in the city of Waterbury, with ranges as low as the 1.3 million to as high as 4.7 million. And the variable in between those ranges is, to the extent that it's, it's low income versus moderate in, in where the components of the rent restrictions are for the various units in play.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. President DiGio Von Carlo.
I just thought one question. Is it in the contract if the owner walks away, tries to sell, the abatements are gone? Is that in our contract?
There is a provision where if they sell to a buyer that is, has experience and the financial wherewithal to carry forward with, with the operation and ownership of the property, there is an ability for them to be able to transfer the property.
And this board, though, can deny that, right?
It's subject to approval of this board.
So we can deny, if, if it's attempted sale and it goes, we can deny that, that abatement being passed on to the next owner?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
President? Alderman Zimmerman. You had your hand up.
All right, through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. It's, it's a little frustrating that the developer's not here because it's not fair to you as our finance director to have to be answering some of these questions. So thank you for answering what, what you have. With my questions, the values that we have for this abatement, are they, I mean, I would think they are in writing, but I'm asking the question anyway. Are these going to be in writing what they owe us every year after year for the next 10 years? Like, are the percentages ever going to change? I know our mill rate may change.
The, the agreement that's been submitted, if it's approved, that will be the, we will adhere to the letter of the agreement in establishing each year's taxable portion of, of the value.
Okay. This was for the developer. I was going to ask them what the projected value of Phase One would be for them. Do you know that answer? What the actual building or 47 units, what the actual value of those 47 units would be?
Well, the value would be established by the city's assessor. And in the analysis that the city's assessor's office had completed, this is what they came up with as far as the average unit value at $75,000 per unit, and then equating to the value of $3.5 million.
My next question was, what safeguards would exist to prevent this? We kind of talked about this, but do we have safeguards that are going to be put in place to prevent them from selling the property before the 11-year period? And then my next question was, how about the 20-year period that, since they were awarded from the state to hold on to this for 20, to have a rent, a reasonable, a lot to rent for 20 years? Like, what, what happens when they sell halfway through? Are there, is there anything put into place to keep them from doing that?
In regards to the city of Waterbury's tax stabilization agreement, it would just be a 10-year tax stabilization agreement. It would not extend beyond the 10th year. In regards to, in regards to conditions of compliance, I spoke to that earlier. There are provisions that are built into both tax stabilization agreement as well as the purchase and sale agreement. I would just reference, I'm, I'm going to presume, as the city has been awarded money from the state in the past, there's deed restrictions that are put on the property. I would surmise that if, if the state, through the Department of Housing, is going to award 9.4 million, that there would be various deed restrictions placed on the property. 9.4 million, that there would be various deed restrictions placed on the property. To the extent that it prevents the sale, I don't know if it goes that far or not.
Right. We have no one to speak to that, from the state or from K-Bar, or anywhere? Correct?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Local jobs, I was going to ask them if, how many local jobs they projected to generate with this? Do we know if we have any contracts with any residential companies, or contractors, or...
I can't speak to that. I would, you know, the, for K-Bar Development, the last major renovation project in the city was 36 North Main.
Okay. And just to add to what the public speaker, Adrian Sanchez, had said, who's an incoming Alderman, like, I'm for development in our city, but sometimes when I look at these things, I have a lot of questions, and I don't necessarily agree with something. So, when we talked about buying St. Mary's, I voted no, because there was a comment made from, in the paper from our administration, that we were protecting that piece of land from affordable housing. You had just made a comment, rent caps on some of these units, there's going to be rent camps on some, so that means there's not going to be rent caps on all of these units. Is that correct?
There'll be some that would be market rate.
Okay.
A component of market rate. It's tied to, at the end of the day, the equation of how many of the units essentially are being financed through the state versus the private investment going into the property. These are not low-income units, but there are, there are rent restriction levels, as well as caps on how much they can increase year over year during the 20-year period.
And do we know how many of these 47 units would be reserved for the medical personnel?
The intent is for it all to be for healthcare housing, healthcare worker housing, which covers a broad spectrum. I'm going to presume that the intent, at the end of the day, was for the whole development to serve that purpose. The issue as far as the rent restrictions, I think that just comes into a component of how many units that would apply to. But I would surmise, with the state committing the funding that they're proposed to be committing, that all of the housing would have to be available for healthcare housing.
What happens when it's not? What happens when we don't have enough medical personnel, but we have people that want to rent it?
Again, I, on the healthcare side, you're, you know, with the benefit of two major hospital institutions here in the city, you know, when, what it's been described to me in regards to the healthcare component, it could be the maintenance workers in the hospital, you know, arguably to include, you know, doctors and nurses in the, in the hospital. So, there's a broad spectrum of the workforce that's covered here. To the extent that if they're unable to secure a renter, I can't speak to that, but I'm presuming there would be an option where they would be able to open it up.
Okay, and why did we choose 11 years? 10 years, plus one? Like, what was the background behind that, from your finance side?
Well, we weren't going to consider 20, I can tell you that, but in all seriousness, when the financial model was presented to us in regards to the private investment in the anticipated net return annually, it was determined that providing the abatement for a 10-year period would allow for the equation to work to provide for repayment of the financing. Essentially, the, the private financing, whether it's a capital equity contribution, or whether it's a financed interest rate-type financing, the 10-year period provided the window with the structure of the rent restrictions to provide the ability for the repayment of the private financing, and that's where the 10 years came from.
Okay, did we, did we add this into any of our five- or 10-year forecasting in our budgets yet? Any of this?
No.
Like, when we're, okay.
You know, at the end of the day, we're, you know, this will provide for growth in property taxes. There'll be, you know, taxable grand list growth that's going to come of this. Yes, what's before you is a proposal for an abatement over the 10 years, but at the conclusion of the 10 years, it would be a fully taxable property.
We were saying that the market value is never going to go up from 3.5 million. Is that accurate? We really think that? After they build on there, are they demoing the building and rebuilding a new build, or are they retrofitting an old school?
My understanding, it's a gut rehab of all four buildings.
What is your opinion, if I was to come back to you and say that I'd like to see us do a three-year abatement, and then revisit this? To see what the real market value is? Because right now, we're looking at a market, the full assessment is 2.4 million for over a decade. I just, I have a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that this is never going to be worth more value than that.
So, the, the ask, there was a submitted request, there was an evaluation of all the factors, also considering that there is a 1.6 million purchase price that's in play as well. You know, all of the factors that I've described, the benefits that are to come of this, this development, it's all intertwined, and ultimately, the decision was made to submit this 10-year tax stabilization agreement for your consideration.
Right. And it's going to be complete in 10 to 12 months, is that correct?
Yes. That's the project, once they begin the project, they anticipate a 10 to 12-month period for completion.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we have an amendment done to this for three years and revisit it after three years, to see what it looks like. And then we can move on with another seven- or 10-year agreement with them. But I just, I really don't see these numbers kind of working out. Do I have a second from the committee?
Second, that motion.
Can we amend a contract without corporation counsel?
Or I guess maybe the, or, is, is it, is the amendment to table it, rather, to look at this?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to table this, to look at amending it for a three-year tax abatement, with an analysis done at the third year, to see if we can move forward for another decade or so of abatements for this property.
A motion made to table, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote to table?
Alderman Capalo. Alderman Hunter.
Oh.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Tajaldean.
No.
Alderman Weaver.
No.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Got two yes, five no.
The motion to table has failed. We'll return to the regular discussion of item number 17. Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, will this, will this purchase fall through if they do not receive the abatement? Do we have that as a fact, or do we not know?
I do not know. I, I would not say that that, you know, is a condition at this point in time. They've asked for consideration, the developers asked for consideration based on the merits, you know, but I think the more critical component is securing the financing from the state.
Do we know if there's a deadline to give them our approval, based on this vote? Will something not match a deadline from the state?
I don't know if there's any particular deadlines. I know that they have been aggressively trying to get through the completion of the application evaluation process with the state. It's in the late stages. It, you know, that's the best I can say on that.
Well, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the next meeting, where we have a new board.
We can't do a second table.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion on item number 17? Alderman Rodriguez?
Well, the discussion was going on through here. I know you came up with a number for every unit at $75,000. When I did the math, that would be square footage at $80 square footage for this, for every unit. With the market today and day of fixing an apartment, I know the average is from $200 to $300 square footage. How we got that number to 75,000 for each unit?
I'm not an assessor, but I will tell you, my understanding is the valuations are driven based off of essentially the net operating income that can be generated from a particular apartment complex, if you will, and the components of that are the rents that are generated, and taking into consideration the costs for maintaining and operating the apartment complex.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion on item number 17? Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
All right, thank you. I just want to make a comment. If a developer is looking for an abatement in the future, I would like to have the developer here to answer questions directly from us, from this board. Again, the, the math here with what the city's losing is not mathing for me. So, that's all I wanted to say. Just have a, next time, just have the developer that's requesting it be here, be present. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes, sorry about that, but through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how we can vote on this without a developer being present to answer questions. So when you go to google.com, which is not the right thing to do to cost something out, but I don't know any other knowledge, because I'm not a builder, minor rehabilitations is $35 a square foot, moderate is $90 a square foot, complete renovation is up to $200 a square foot, additions to homes are $500 a square foot, kitchen remodels, if, I mean, Alderman Rodriguez is in the field, so, again, with the math, like, and we have no one to ask. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. LeBlanc. So when we spoke about this back in September, I had asked you if you were able to find what the state of Connecticut lists as the fixed rates for rentals, right? So this, the 45 units will be a combination of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. Phase 2 will involve an additional development of the back of the property, right? So those numbers you gave me in September for a studio in a one-bedroom were $1,101 a month, and for a two-bedroom, it was $1,474 a month. Do we believe that those numbers are still within the ballpark?
Yes.
So that being the case, if this property is open to all employees in the hospital healthcare field, we're not only talking about traveling nurses or residents, we're also talking about custodial, janitorial staff, landscaping staff, kitchen staff, is that correct? They would also be eligible to rent here?
That is my understanding, yes.
So we are trading a 10-year abatement for a 20-year rent cap for people that might otherwise be priced out of their housing in a city that's already experiencing a housing crisis? Would you agree with that?
I would agree, yes, and from the standpoint that the, the assistance from the state comes with the 20-year requirement.
Right. So I'm guessing the question here is, do we value several hundred thousand dollars more in tax revenue, or do we value 20 years of rent stabilized housing for people that have trouble affording their housing on a regular basis? Would that be correct? Those are the two components of this.
Yeah, there's a lot that has been discussed this evening, and these are, you know, components for your consideration.
Correct.
But what you've highlighted is, is correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 17?
Alderman Zimmerman?
Through you, we don't, Mr. LeBlanc isn't a housing specialist. We don't know who's going, and this isn't in a disrespectful tone at all, we don't know how many apartments are going to be saved for custodials versus a surgeon.
Correct. That is, I think that's true, right? If we're looking at who's looking to rent, right, across from potentially one of the hospitals they're working at, more than likely, it would be someone who is passing through, which could be a traveling surgeon, you're right. But there is an opportunity here to create safe housing that's capped at a certain price for double the amount of time of the abatement. So I, I think the argument around hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax differentials over 10 years on that 11th year or the 12th year, however you want to count it, you're doing the full cost of the assessment, but we are still locking in an additional 10 years of rent stabilized housing, is, I think, a pretty big argument to make.
I can understand that. I do have about 15 appointments after this election with residents who like to understand their tax increases.
Absolutely.
And here I am, going to approve an abatement on something that we're say is not going to gain any value over the next decade. And I just have a hard time with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just...
I don't think we are doing cross, I heard the president say earlier, we want to keep...
You know what, I allowed it, I allowed it for our caucus, I'll allow for Republicans.
Alderman Newsham.
Representative James.
Thank you for recognizing me, Chairman Tajaldean. From the information I read, it's all 47 units that are going to be capped by the state. It's not some. I just wanted to make sure that's clear, because I heard the word "some" units were capped, and some were going to be public pricing. I would be correct in stating that all 47 units are capped with the contract. Correct?
I can't confirm that. I, my...
That's what I was reading.
Okay.
Yeah. And I agree with Alderman Tajaldean as far as the rent stability over the 20-year period, and something that my colleague had asked Alderman Rodriguez, the market value, you know, just because you put eight or nine million dollars into a property, it doesn't mean it's worth that much more. It's, with this type of project, it's basically based on the rent roll that is being received versus the operating expenses. So it's, I don't want, you know, get the misconception that this project is costing nine, or 10, or 11 million dollars between state money, K-Bar's investments in buying it, with the city, abatements, et cetera, that they can turn around and sell it for that price. It's basically on the rent roll that is received that's going to be capped for 20 years by the state. And I think Alderman Rodriguez, I believe you said, we didn't have a market value on page 467 I'm looking at.
Yeah.
The market value was just a 3.5 million across the 10 years, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, my question is, the, you know, we do assessments every five years. Would that change in the assessment five years from now, for the years 6 to 10? Or will it stay at, just locked in at the 3.5?
It would stay at this until the expiration of the tax stabilization agreement.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out a couple more points. There was a lot you guys talked about. That's it for me right now, thank you.
President DiGio Vancarlo, your hand was up earlier.
So, we're just talking about the existing buildings. This has nothing to do with the new building.
That's correct.
As far as tax... State funding comes with a clear binding requirement. Units must remain dedicated to healthcare workers for at least 20 years, and rents are fixed, are fixed for 20 years to maintain affordability. Says it right in the contract that the state funding comes with clear binding requirements. Units must remain dedicated to healthcare workers for at least 20 years. So I'm not, did someone else, I didn't see where someone else might say he can go outside that scope, because I don't see it. So, I mean, if we're talking about the new building, we can cross that bridge when it happens, but as far as this, I see 47 units that have to stay within the healthcare field. So, unless I'm reading it wrong, I don't see anywhere else where it says he can go outside, and, and I believe that they're not capped, so I just, unless I'm reading it wrong. But I just want to, it says it right there on the second page, state funding comes with clear binding requirements, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion on item number 17 for a new point? Alderman Rodriguez?
Just one more, to clarify this. Just one more to clarify this. This is for just that building of phase one, or is for the whole property even when they do the second building?
So, this is just for the four existing buildings. There is a vacant parcel that's part of the sale, that the proposal for that parcel is phase two, it's not part of this whatsoever.
Okay.
And that's for the development of a new apartment building.
So, that will be taxable in a different way?
That would be a separate discussion when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Just another comment. I'm disappointed to hear, oh, sorry. I'm disappointed to hear we'll cross that bridge when we get there. That's, that's not how, how we, we should do this with the city funds or anything like that.
It's not to say that, it's just, it's, there, the development that is on the table right now is phase one for the four buildings. And I can't, I can't tell you whether or not the developer would come forward with a request for any type of tax stabilization for phase two. That'll be, it's a separate component. It's not clear at the moment what the financing components of that development will be. I certainly would imagine that the developer will be seeking state assistance for that, but what the makeup is and what the components of that development are, that's all part of phase two, which really hasn't been furthered. The total focus has been on phase one in consideration of what's being proposed and the application that's gone into the state and is at this late stage of the process. It's just for those four buildings.
Okay, and, and that's why I'm going to reiterate this, that is why I want the developer here. Thank you.
Any further discussion, or can we? Are you going to bring up a new dimension of this that we haven't talked about?
No, but I mean, it's, we're still, it's, we're still in our committee where we debate, like, so, we're gonna, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, we said that we were not going to, they are not going to have a reevaluation when we all who live in the city get reevaluations every five years, is that correct?
That's correct. This, the proposed value in consultation with the assessor's office was established at the three-point-five million, a value based upon complete gut renovation of those four buildings and the establishment of the forty-seven units. What, you know, it would be locked in at this for the ten-year period, you know, what will happen with property values at each of the next incremental five-year revaluations would not be factored into the property value here if the tax stabilization agreement is approved.
Okay, and then K bar cannot, is not held to be owners for the next ten or twenty years versus, with our abatement or the state's commitments? I don't think you can answer that, but if you can, is that correct? That they are not being held to be committed owners?
I do not know that in regards to the component for the state assistance for our agreement. We do have provisions in here, protective provisions.
I remember you saying that.
But ultimately, if there was a transfer, sale transfer of the property, the remaining abatement, tax stabilization, for that to transfer over, it would come before this board for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
I want to make a motion to table this.
We've already tabled it once, we can't table it twice.
Okay.
All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
No.
Can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Cavalo.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Talladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Five yes, two no.
Okay. The motion passes.
Aye.
Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an overdose data to action contract limiting overdose through collaborative actions in localities subrecipient contract with City of New Haven as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN, MSN, and PH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I had a question, just to see, how do we, how are we able to see this information that we're collecting throughout, throughout a year, say? Can I come to your office and do you have, or is it online? How do you?
We don't have, Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health, we don't have it publicly available online necessarily, but the state does have public data on overdose deaths available and accessible to the public, but I would be happy to share data with you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eighteen? Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Sorry, just a comment. Thank you for being here and thank you for everything your department is doing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eighteen? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number twenty. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for One Exchange Place Fit Out with J.A. Rosa Construction LLC in the amount of three million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Hello, David.
How are you?
Good, good. I don't think this question might be for you, it might be for the finance. We, I asked last meeting, I think, or two meetings before, how much we have already spent in this building? Do we have a calculation already how much we have spent in this building with this, with the bond that we putting forward?
So, Alderman, you're correct, but at first, I should identify myself as David Simpson, Director of Public Works, but you are correct, that question would be for, more for the Director.
At this point, of the combination of the bond authorization and the remaining state assistance, there is, and that was in total approximately eight and a half million dollars, approximately six million of that has been committed to date, with a large portion of the balance that'll be a component of funding this contract.
So, the three-point-eight million that we're approving today, it's already included on the six million, or the six million is already being utilized, and then this is going to be added to it?
So, this contract will be split funded between two bond authorizations. For the tenant floors, it will come out of the One Exchange Bond Authorization, and for the swing space floors, for the Chase Building employees, that will come out of the Chase Building Bond Authorization. The, the, you know, unfortunately, it's a time of, a sign of the times, if you will, you know, the, the cost for the fit out, it's substantial, it's certainly higher than our original estimates, but at the end of the day, again, the financing of this contract would be split between those two bond authorizations.
So, do we have an amount, what goes to what?
It would, I would, I don't have an exact amount, but I would, I would say approximately two million will go against the One Exchange with the one million eight fifty balance, and these are estimates, but coming from the Chase Building.
Okay, so, if we go over that bonded money, what's going to happen next?
Well, we're not going to go over, this is the last significant contract to complete the renovation and fit out of One Exchange.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion on item number twenty? Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Mr. LeBlanc, I'm sorry. Sorry, can you come here for a minute? Can you repeat what you just said, that last sentence?
This is the last major contract for the fit out of the One Exchange Building. This is the final component. It's the fit out at this stage of the project. There is a lot of work that's gotten done and is continuing to be done. This will be the last piece, and once the fit out is complete, the tenants that are scheduled to move in will move in, and also, the employees in the Chase Building would be relocated for the rehabilitation project of the Chase Building. We're estimating, in case this would be another question, that the fit out would be completed by April, and so, we're anticipating a move-in period in the April to June timeframe next year.
Okay, thank you, that was my question, so, thank you for answering it.
Any further discussion on item number twenty? Alderwoman Zimmerman, sorry.
Thanks.
One was for Mr. LeBlanc, but, Mr. Simpson, the RFPs that went out, how many people bid for this job?
Well, J.A. Rosa was the lowest qualified bidder. I think there were two for this project.
Okay.
But, again, when we interviewed them both, clearly, J.A. Rosa was the lowest, most qualified.
Okay.
For this project.
Okay, so, it was two? Thank you. And then, Mr. Le, or if, you can answer, it's great, too, but the total cost that was approved for this project, what was it? Can you remind me? Like, between state grants, our money, bonds, everything, what was the whole number?
Well, the bond authorization for One Exchange was six million. The state grant for the acquisition and contribution towards the One Exchange renovation was seven and a half million.
And then, do we know the split on what was for renovation and what was for purchase on the state?
The purchase was four-point-five million.
Thank you. Who are the tenants that are moving in?
So, at this point, there is one tenant already there on the third floor in regards to the sixth floor, that is where NVCOG will be moving into, and on the fourth floor, the, one and a half of it will be fit out for the adult probate court, and we are in final negotiations for securing the tenant for the other half of that floor.
Okay. We said it was one point, to fit out the swing space was one-point-eight-five million dollars, is that right? For Chase to move into that building?
So, I don't have the exact split cost as far as the overall contract value of the three million eight fifty. I would, you know, just approximate a split of two million and the balance of one million eight fifty towards the Chase.
And do you recall what the estimated value was that we set aside when we were originally going to use a different building before we purchased One Exchange for the swing space? Because I, you had answered a question during the budget time that we had that allocated. I just don't know what the number was.
I don't recollect exactly, but it would have been based on, you know, going back to the swing space for, possibly as far back as with the Southern Bank Building when, when City Hall was renovated. There's other comparables that we put in, but the, the exact number, it was, I would in, it would be in the neighborhood of at least a couple hundred thousand per year.
Okay. I'd just like to say for the record, I originally voted no, so I'll be voting no on this because there's no point in changing, not buying a building and then saying we're going to renovate it, so, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty? Alderman Rodriguez?
Hi. If we fill up all the building, the whole building with tenants, the revenue taken from there will be go back, going back to the bond, or it's going to be to a different source?
So, the tenant revenue will come in as a general fund rental income. We have other properties that we have tenant leases with, and the way it's structured, historically, it's been structured, is that comes in as revenue to the city's general fund, and then, any associated operational costs are built into the buildings through Department of Public Works through their budget.
So, none of this money will go back to the bond that we just took out?
We actually haven't sold any bonds associated at this point, but the, the bond authorization of the six million, upon closing of the sale of the twenty-four thirty Bank Street property, Sarah Gary, the manager of budget and development oversight, will submit a request to appropriate those funds towards the project, and that will reduce the, the overall bonding.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course. Any further discussion on item number twenty? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call vote?
Alderman Cavalo.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Talladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Six yes, one no.
Okay, the motion passes. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that, sorry, twenty-two, thank you. Item number twenty-two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Coats Towing LLC as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
I have a quick, through you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question because we're going to go into a lot of towing and storage contracts. I'm just looking, are these, all of these, all of these.
Contracts.
Businesses or contracts, are they the same that we currently have? Is there any new or change in price, or?
There are no new companies going onto this list, or the same ones that we've had for the last two years. I'm sorry, Mark Ulette, legal advisor from Waterbury PD.
Thank you.
So, the eleven, our same eleven we've had for the past two years. It was one additional applicant who did not qualify.
And we, we need eleven businesses to do this?
There's no set number.
Okay.
It's just pursuant to an RFQ, and we review the applications each time the contract comes up for renewal, which is every two years, and we vet them, and then, if the company's qualified and meeting all of the requirements of the RFQ, then they're approved.
And then, who gets the job when it happens? When someone calls in to get a tow, or we need a tow, how do we, is it just a rotating, or?
There's a rotating list. The call comes in to Waterbury Police Department, goes through dispatch, they contact Waterbury Towers Association, who maintains the list of the companies that are on the rotation, and they go from the rotation.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-two? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Item number 23, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Town Plot Auto Body, Inc., as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 24, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Carass Motors, as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 25, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Lakewood Auto Body, LLC, as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 26 was withdrawn. Item number 27, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with J. and O. Auto Get Ready, LLC, as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 28, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Avenue Auto Sales, Inc., as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 29, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Durable Radiator and Auto Body, Inc., as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 30, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Hook and Go Automotive, LLC, as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 31, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and, it's okay, it threw me off, a tow and vehicle storage contract with George Williamson, DBA Auto Electric, Inc., as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 32, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Eastwood Towing, LLC, as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 33, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tow and vehicle storage contract with Waterbury Towing and Recovery, Inc., as submitted by Mark Ulette, legal advisor, Waterbury Police Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Item number 35, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a Contract Amendment Number Three to the Tilcon 2025 Milling and Paving Program Amendment, as submitted by Roy Kavanaugh, PE, city engineer. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 36, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tariff agreement for Wendell Cross School with Connecticut Light and Power, DBA EverSource Energy, as submitted by Michael Bonk, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Hi. And just so you're aware, we were just noticed that we were awarded participation for this project through the NRES program last week by EverSource, and they indicated that they needed the application signed and submitted by November 18th, and the only opportunity to get the approval for the mayor to sign was at this meeting this evening.
Okay. My question to it, I'm not that a fan of solar systems, but what will be the guarantee of the solar panels? Are we gonna fix it, or are they gonna fix it?
So, we would own the panels once they're constructed and installed, and would be responsible for the maintenance on the panels for their life expectancy, be it 20-plus years.
Okay.
And that's factored in all of this. Keep in mind that previously, there was applications to the state of Connecticut through this, the school construction program with DAS. They are gonna finance the majority of the cost of the construction of the solar panels, with the city reaping the full benefit of the tariff agreement with EverSource. For this solar project for Wendell Cross, it's estimated at an annual payment to the city of 60,000 per year over the 20-year period via this NRES program.
Okay, and this is my concern. Okay, we get it, $60,000 a year, and approximately 1.2 million dollars for the 20 years. If one of these panels get damaged, how much is it gonna cost to the city to fix it? Because that will take away from whatever we're gaining from it.
So, in moving down this path with multiple projects for various schools and down the road, there's gonna be consideration for the city's buildings. There is an RFP that currently is in development, anticipated to be released before the end of the year, for hiring a maintenance firm essentially, that would be responsible for addressing any repairs that may come about, but also performing annual maintenance to ensure that the production of the panels are at the highest levels possible. You know, it's, these panels will be located on the school roofs. They will be insured in the event that there's a catastrophic event. We would certainly look to secure recovery through our insurance, you know, but at the end of the day, it's, it would have to be a pretty catastrophic event for significant damage to occur with the systems on the roof.
So here comes my second concern about this. You're saying that we might hire someone to maintenance and fix it. How much is that gonna cost to the city? Because right now, we're only getting 60,000 a year. How much is it gonna cost us to hire this company and to fix this, to take care of this problems?
So we'll have the economies of scale in that, you know, this will be, there are five projects that have been approved by the state through the Department of Administrative Services. The previous four have already been approved for participation in this NRES program. This is the fifth one, so the annual revenues, you know, depending on the size of the system with each of the schools, will be compounded, but ultimately, you know, there will come a cost. Our energy consultant has estimated an annual cost in the neighborhood of 10,000, 10,000 to 15,000 for all of the systems. And then, you know, to the extent that there's necessary repairs, the hope again would be that it would be minimized by completing the annual maintenance on the systems.
So we're talking from that 60? Now, you know, I know we get these numbers, but if this is generating power and we're gaining, benefiting from it, there's times that we have a lot of sun and we'll generate more, would that change the money that we're coming in, or is it already a set price for how much we're gonna get for the year?
Yeah, it's definitely based on production, so that's why it's certainly gonna be important to maintain the systems to benefit the most production, but, you know, the renewable energy consultants, you know, they've done the analysis, you know, based on the sun exposure for each of the roof systems, you know, and I'm sure you're familiar with Wendell Cross, you know, that facility has full sun exposure.
So now, this is really important. Will the school be benefiting from this energy? So the cost of their light will be less, or this is gonna be sold to EverSource, and we're just using our roofs to put those satellite panels?
So we did the evaluation, it's referred to whether it's gonna be before the meter or after the meter, and these five systems are structured so that the city will receive revenue payments via the NRES program for the production that is generated off of the systems.
And why we don't have it to use for the schools too?
It's partially six or one and a half a dozen. It's, at the end of the day, it's either in the form of energy savings to the energy costs or revenue, and I did have our consultant confirm at the end of the day that as far as the net realizable benefit, it's this structure that provides the better benefit.
Okay. I don't think we're utilizing this real good, and that's why, you know, to me, the solar panels that we're putting in our buildings is not producing, is not production to the city. The beneficiary here is EverSource. They're getting the most out of it, not the city. But, you know, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, any further discussion on item number 36, Alderwoman Zimmerman?
So, Alderman Rodriguez, what does that mean? Can you explain that to me? When you make a comment that EverSource is the benefitter here, like what?
Because if they generate more power towards them, they're the ones taking more of this energy than what they're gonna pay for the city. So, that's my opinion about it.
So all the, and Mr. LeBlanc, although through you, Mr. Chair, all of the energy that's coming through the panel isn't gonna be used at our schools, it's gonna be sold? Is that true?
And EverSource is gonna pay us for the power generation.
And what are they paying us?
19 cents.
Oh, it's in here.
Yep.
98 cents?
19.
90 cents per kilowatt?
Nearly 20 cents per kilowatt, yep.
Okay, 19, you said, all right. Do we get the rebate from purchasing these versus, I didn't even know if there was a lease agreement at the scale, but?
We will own these systems, they won't be, they're not leased. The issue there is if we went the lease structure, the lease company would generate a component of the net benefit from the system. And being that, you know, a benefit that the state provides, in addition to the NRES programs for EverSource, is the financing that's provided through the school construction program, which is essentially, it's a grant at nearly 80% of the cost is funded through the DAS grant that we've secured for not only the Wendell Cross project, but for others. In addition to that, we still remain hopeful that through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, that we're gonna be able to get grandfathered in to secure the remaining 20% of the cost of these installations through the federal government. With the change of the administration, there's been grandfather dates that have been established, one at the end of this calendar year, and then one July 1st of 2026, and we're hopeful to be able to capture, if not the first grandfather clause provisions, at the latest, the July 1 of next year, so we can fully capitalize on the credits that are available through that inflation reduction program.
And the only other thing I ask is that we have something put in place to make sure that these are generating the way they should, whether it's this maintenance contractor, because you hear a lot of stories out there that people have great savings, and then all of a sudden, the panels get a little wonky, and the numbers get a little wonky, so if we can have something put in place, that would be fantastic.
I would absolutely agree, and that's why we, you know, we wanted to move on it immediately as far as securing a maintenance contractor that would be put in place for when these systems go live.
Are you all set, Alderwoman? Any further discussion on item number 36? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we will return to the regular order of business. Items, the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve. Item number two is receiving place on file. Items three, four, five, and six are on consent to approve. Item seven is on consent to approve. Item eight is, are receiving place on file. Item nine is on consent to approve. Item 10 is receiving place on file. Items 11 and 12 are on consent to approve. Items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 are on consent to approve. Items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 are on consent to approve. Items 24, 25, 26 is withdrawn, so items 24 and 25 are on consent to approve. Item 26 is withdrawn. Items 27, 28, 29, and 30 are on consent to approve. Items 31, 32, and 33 are on consent to approve. Item 34 is receiving place on file, and items number 35 and 36 are on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read?
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
I like number 17 pulled.
So, second, if you want, then we'll pull, we'll pull the items, yeah, okay. So, motion made in second is discussion, Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to pull number 17, please.
All right, so just number seven. And further discussion, Alderman Mosley?
Sorry, I'd like to pull number five.
You're pulling number five? Alderman Alsup, I believe you want to pull an item? 17?
I pulled the?
17, right?
It's already done. I pulled that.
Oh, I thought you said 17, I'm sorry. Okay, hold on one second. So, items number five, number 17, and Alderwoman Zimmerman, I believe you voted no on one other one?
Yes, Mr. President, number 20, please.
Number 20. Alderman Dorso, the new motion is to approve the consent calendar as read, minus items number five, 17, and 20. Is there a motion? Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy? The ayes have it, the motion carries. And the item, the consent calendar is approved with respect to item number five. The chair would refer to the chair of the Finance Committee, Alderman Salvio.
Your Finance, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter to allow WDC to manage and administer the Willby High School football field renovations. Project pursued to master municipal agreement between Waterbury Development Corporation and the City of Waterbury as submitted by Roland Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Discussion, Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, just a quick question. And whoever is able to answer, just would appreciate it. Is there any, do we have any opportunity to use any city funds, current city funds, to renovate or to add renovation of the track to this project along with the state funds that we currently have?
I'll have to ask.
Senior Gary Manager, Budget Development and Oversight, there are currently no funds approved at the city level, on the city side or the education side, to be used for the track area at Willby. And I believe it'll end up being in the millions of dollars to be able to do a project at that portion.
I understand, I understand none has been approved, but do we have any, I guess I could say, Alec, do we have any sources that we could use? Or could we look into that to go along with this project?
We'll be starting our budget development process for fiscal year '27 over the next few weeks. Departments are asked to review capital projects and submit requests for capital projects. I'm not sure if it'll be something that the Education Department would be willing to put funding towards. They typically don't fund projects with just totally local funds in the millions of dollars. It's probably unlikely that they would have that amount of funding totally at the local level. If it were something smaller where they had matching funds, that may be a possibility. But it is not likely that they'd commit millions of dollars, that they'd have that in their budget.
Okay, and so, follow-up question. How long would it take for us to get a, an estimate of the cost of renovating the track?
WDC could answer that question.
We'll work something up and give it me two weeks.
That's fair. I think that's fair.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll submit the memo to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, oh, I'm sorry, guys, sorry. Alderman Rodriguez?
Still here.
I was looking that way, I'm sorry.
If there any way that, in according with Mr., our colleague, that we could find any grants or something to get this done?
Oh, we will search, we have been searching for other grant opportunities. We've not come across any grant opportunities for this. Doesn't mean we won't continue to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for being here. Further discussion?
Just, just one comment.
Alderman Alsaf?
I just have one comment. I heard millions to make a track?
Yes.
Good God almighty, are we making it on gold?
No.
A millions, millions?
Millions.
Multiple millions to make a track to run?
Yes.
No, that's, you're saying the, just a track? I thought we just proved the football, oh, you're talking a practice field, the practice field. Well, if we're doing both, that's different than saying the track, we're doing the track and the practice field. Even then, millions?
Yes.
I mean, that's okay, I'm going in the landscaping business, so hopefully I got it ready to go for the time to bid.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving item number five, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion carries with respect to item number, excuse me, item number 17. The chair would recognize the chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, Alderman Tajaldean.
Item number 17, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a tax assessment agreement with Kbar Development Corp. for Phase One redevelopment of 55 Cole Street properties as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Hunter. Discussion. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Thank you. I just want to say that I am not in agreement with this abatement. I agree with my fellow Alderwoman to have this revisited and have less years presented instead of the 10 years. I would rather see maybe two years. So, completion of Phase One, completion, maybe revisited after completion of Phase Two. So, again, I will be rejecting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alderman Alsaf?
Thank you. A couple of questions. I was looking back and I saw the original contract was to commence in October, and that didn't happen. And there was contingencies and all that in there. October's gone, nothing's happened. I also did not see anything in the original contract for abatements. So, I don't see why we're, have, we have a gun to our head at this point for abatements. When Kbar agreed to the purchase agreement to begin with, and there was nothing in there about abatements. Now, I don't get the privilege of going to the diners or wherever we make these other deals, but I have a big problem with that. We agree to a contract and then suddenly, well, we might not get it sold if we don't give them to them. We might not have this, we might not have... These people are gonna make a lot of money there, and I'm sorry if they don't make a lot more. But this is ridiculous. The stakeholders in the City of Waterbury, the taxpayers, that's who the 15 of us are sitting here for. We gotta be speaking for them. How would Kbar, I don't care if they make more, they're gonna make money no matter what. This is a sweetheart deal. And, you know, the fact that, you know, we're known as the selective real estate operation of Waterbury, where we, we buy high and sell low and we do all these crazy deals, I don't wanna be part of that. And thank God, I won't be next year, next week. But, this is ridiculous. The stakeholders in the City of Waterbury have been on the phone to me and talking to me at every opportunity about this, how ridiculous this is. Why do I have to keep paying more and no income whatsoever to my house to help? But we're gonna give these guys a sweetheart deal that they've already had a few already. This is absolutely immoral to this, taxpayers, the City of Waterbury. There's no way anybody in this room who claims to be a representative of the people, not a representative of the administration, but a representative of the people, can sit here and say that this is a good deal for the taxpayers. Because it absolutely is not. I have no problems with working something out. But this is such a sweetheart deal, I don't care. The reason why they agreed to it, they got 20 years, they agreed already to say they're gonna freeze the rent. Nothing in the original contract said, "We're going to build this if you give us a tax As far as I'm concerned, they're already behind schedule. And the other question, I think I heard it answered, I'm gonna ask it directly, is Phase Two going to have any opportunity for an abatement?
I would say only if the developer submits a request and then it'll be considered by the administration.
Sir, could I make a request? I get an abatement for the next 10 years for my house? It's legitimate, I have to live there. And I'm on a fixed income, too. I mean, this is gonna be a brand-new building. A brand-new building. They're putting $14 million on the table with the old buildings and we're saying, okay, it's only gonna be worth, what is it, 3.5? This is dyslexic real estate business that we're in is ridiculous. We gotta get the hell out of it. One Exchange Place is a money pit, this is a money pit, we got that other pile of used bricks that we have on Woke Road, we call Sacred Heart property, that hasn't happened in almost two years now, a year and a half, sitting there idle. And you can't say that it's not costing us anything, because I know there's police response. I know there's been pipes broken in it. I know there's other problems with that building that are ongoing, that we, the taxpayers, are paying for. We have untaxed property that should be taxed. And we're sitting here saying, let's give these developers, because they're friends with somebody, we're gonna give them a good deal. That's wrong. Absolutely immoral and wrong. And anybody who claims to be a representative of the taxpayers who sits there and does it, you drank the Kool-Aid. You drank the Kool-Aid because it's not what's necessary. It shouldn't be. The original contract had nothing specified that they needed to get an abatement or not go through with it. Nothing. So, they signed a contract agreeing to do this. We can tell them, no abatement, and they still have to go through, because we didn't do anything else to break that contract. So, let's wise up here a little bit and be true representatives. Yield the floor to anybody else.
Further discussion? Alderman Zimmerman?
Through you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this item so we can look at lightning...
It's already been tabled once, we can't table it again. You made the motion to table it already.
This is new?
It's, no, it's the same item.
Since it's on the board?
Same item.
It's not in committee?
Excuse me?
Since it's not in committee, I thought that there was...
No, it's still the same item. Yeah.
Point of order, it's a different committee altogether. It's a committee of the whole. It's no longer just a committee. It can be tabled by the committee of the whole. Point of order.
Let me recess it and I'll check with the, with the attorney.
I'd say we table it till you check in.
I'll say we recess it.
Good. One time.
I think it should be tabled, just second.
Okay, Alderman Zimmerman, you win. There's a motion to table, is there a second?
Yes, I think...
Motion made by Alderman Zimmerman to table, seconded by Alderman Alsaf. Can I get a roll call on a motion to table? 17. Great, 17.
Alderman Alsaf?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
No.
Alderman Dorso?
No.
Is he here? He said no.
Oh, okay, he said no. I'm not sure I got this right, okay. Alderman Hunter?
No.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Alderman Newjame?
No.
Alderman Rinaldi?
No.
Alderman Rodriguez?
No.
Alderman Salvio?
No.
Alderman Taladine?
No.
Alderman Weaver?
No.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo?
No.
Eleven no's, three yes.
Okay, the motion to table fails. We are back on the original agenda item number 17. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote for item 17's approval.
Alderman Alsaf?
No.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
No.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Newjame?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
No.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo?
Yes.
12 yes, 3 no.
Okay, the motion, the ayes have it, the motion carries and item 17 is approved with respect to item number 20. The chair would recognize the chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, Alderman Tajaldean.
Item number 20, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract for One Exchange Place fit-out with J.A. Rosa Construction LLC in the amount of $3,850,000 as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Hunter. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Alsaf?
No.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Newjame?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
No.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo?
Yes.
12 yes, 2 no.
Okay, the ayes have it, the motion carries and item number 20 is approved with respect to standing committee. The chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Let the record show that Alderman Dorso recused himself.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $32,257.61 as submitted by Cassie M. Gorman, CCMC Tax Collector.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley, seconded by Alderman Rinaldi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving the tax refunds, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the refunds are approved. That is, oh, let Alderman Dorso come back. That is our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President. I want to take a minute to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for all of our colleagues that will be leaving us after this meeting. Thank you for choosing to become a public servant. I'd like to personally acknowledge an individual that has been a part of my life and my family's life for as long as I can remember, Majority Leader Christian Dorso. Chris is a critical thinker that leads by example. His work ethic and integrity are his core values. Chris has been an inspiration and a mentor to me since joining this board. I want to thank him for all his help and guidance, but most of all, for his friendship. So, to Chris, Mike, Vic, Ruben, and Jack, thank you for your service. To the residents of Waterbury, it's been an honor and privilege serving alongside you. God bless you all. Thank you.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here for the past two years. I made some good friends, good people. To my chairman, thank you for your time. And here, to Belinda, you know, we're gonna see each other a lot, texting. But I want to thank all my constituents in the Second District for their support for the past two years. And I want to thank all my colleagues, George, Mary Graves, Kelly, and the rest of the guys that are here. Every single person. But I made some good friends. I hope we continue with the discussions and, you know, I'll be watching from the, that side of the aisle as the citizens of Waterbury. I'm not going too far, I'm just going a couple feet to the other side, so I'll be watching. Thank you so much, appreciate you guys. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you. And how did you miss Alsaf, by the way? Man. Alderman Newjame.
Thank you. Just want to echo the sentiments of, want to thank my colleagues and the city and constituents, my running mates. It was a challenging year, this year, to say the least, when it came to the political world. You know, what we do is not easy. Putting your name in the hat and being a public servant is not easy. So I want to thank all you guys that are leaving us not too far, again, Ruben, right? But, and congratulating the new incoming class. You know, I was thinking, you know, kind of like in school or baseball, you know, sports teams, we should have like a, what do you call it? Like a graduating class every two years. Like a portrait, it'll be, you know, just to kind of see the progression over the years. Thank you.
Further discussion, Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you. It's a pleasure always working with you guys and I love you all, I hope you all know that. Just a few announcements for veterans. I am a veteran, very proud to have served our country, and I'm part of the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee. So they have a ceremony that one of our public speakers mentioned. It's tomorrow at eleven AM at Veterans Hall. I hope to see everyone there. And there's also a Black Women Veterans Ceremony tomorrow at three PM, also at Veterans Hall. And I'll also be there, so hope to see you guys there, thank you.
Alderman Hunter.
Ditto to what everyone said and to all the outgoing, thank you for the knowledge and wisdom that I learned from you all. I'm gonna miss you all, and I'm gonna see you around. Also, if I be remiss, during the election last week, I have to mention this young man, a gentleman and a scholar, and that's Paul Kondash. For all the things he's going through in life with his health and everything, he and I sat out there in front of Crosby High School together for almost, what, thirteen, fourteen hours together. We learned a lot from each other, and let me tell you, he's a man of wisdom, I learned a lot of things from this man. And to you, Paul, while you're going to your surgery in January, if there's anything I can do for you, call me and I'll be there for you. But you are a gentleman and a scholar. Thank you.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the sentiments, my colleagues, and I will miss each and every one of you who will not be returning for the next term. Being a rookie this term, I, I learned a lot from you all, and I'd like to say, and I strongly feel we worked, although we don't always agree on issues and topics and items, we work collaboratively and respectively. And I, I think that that's how government should work. I wish it worked like that at all levels, but, you know, we're gonna do what we can here at the city level. So I just want to say to those that will not be continuing on, thank you for your service to our city. Thank you for your service to all of our respective communities. And we hope you are not strangers, and we, like Alderman Rodriguez said, we hope you are not too far away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Weaver.
Ditto to everything that was said, Mike, Chris, Jack, Ruben, and especially Mike. I thank you for all that you've done and all that you probably will do for the city of Waterbury. We'll miss you, but I know you'll be here.
Anyone else? Oh, man, can I end on this note? Go ahead, Alderman Alsaf. I'll follow you up then.
You know, Mike, if you need a bathroom break, I suggest you take it now, please. I promised you, Mike, you wouldn't, you'd have to hear from me tonight. Just so everybody knows, I've heard many times, many, many times, how much Mike and I dislike each other and all that, we're best of friends. And I hope he says the same. There's no animosity at all. We have different points of view and sometimes he's right and he thinks like me, but most of the time, you know, we do have different points. But I gotta say this, that, you know, it's been an interesting two years. And I know I'm like a toothache, when you get it, it's gone, you're gonna miss it a little bit, but not that bad, but it'll be okay. You'll do, you'll do without me. But I, I'm proud of one thing, and, you know, I'm gonna brag a little bit. I came in here with integrity and I'm leaving with integrity. And I, I think that's an important thing that I ask all my colleagues to strive for and continue to do the best you can. We represent a lot of people who aren't smart enough to represent themselves, and I say that because of the lousy, stinking turnout we had for voting. They don't want to help themselves, yet we sit here and we try to help them. I would continue doing it, but I'm getting a little too old and a little too tired of it. I'm getting worn out. But it's been a privilege to serve on this board and boards that I've sat in before. And don't fear me at the podium, or should I say, oh, the mayor's not here, the lectern, I'm sorry. See, I do learn things, it takes me a while, but that's a lectern, not a podium. I just hope that in the future, the Kool-Aid gets watered down a little bit and we start thinking a little deeper, we start doing a little better, and we put this stuff aside that we've been doing and try to get this city back. My one goal when I came in here was to make this a city that people didn't move out of. It hasn't happened yet, but I think we're getting a little closer to it. And there's gonna be fifteen people sitting in here that need to strive for that as the number one goal. You can do all the community development you want, but if people don't spend the money or come here to live, you wasted your time. So please, think of the taxpayers, think of the city. I was born here, as I said, they carried me into my house seventy-one plus years ago. They're gonna carry me out hopefully in twenty or thirty years from now too. But that's what it's all about. I want everybody to love this city and I want you guys to carry on what you're supposed to be doing and trying to make it better all the time. Thank you for the opportunities and thank you for the accolades I received, they're very much appreciated.
Thank you, Jack and Alderman Alsaf, excuse me, and I agree on the friendship, my friend. I do have a little business, Alderman Mosley, you did ask about the traffic study. It is almost done, it's gonna have to clear the Police Commission, and then it'll be sent to us for review, so just to give you the update on the traffic, the safety study that you wanted to get an update on? You had asked last week.
Yeah, is it gonna be presented at the next Police Commission meeting?
So the next Police Commission will hopefully be December. It'll clear that if, if Mr. Kavanaugh has it done by then, it'll clear that, and we should have it by January, February at the latest.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alderman Zimmerman, I answered your question on the water, we got that done. Alderman Alsaf.
I can't finish.
Excuse me?
I'd like to request the information on what we're doing with Sacred Heart. And if I can't get it, I will put an FYI in because it's something that is still important.
Somehow I knew I shot myself in the foot as soon as I said...
You know, Mike, swing and a miss. I keep it up, I'm persistent, nothing else.
Thank you. It's been a, oops, go ahead, Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you, I just have one quick question. Can we put in our note if we can talk to the Mayor's Office about an opportunity for Kennedy High School funding for the band in this trip? Can we just see if there's grand sort of funding available?
Joe Gary's right there, I'm sure he'll relay the message.
Thank you, Mr. Harry, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, anything else? So I'm gonna say thank you to you guys, it's been a good two years. I think we've done a lot for the city, whether we agree or disagree. I definitely think we've, we've made some great improvements to the city. We don't agree a lot, I mean, not, we don't agree all the time, and I think we handle it well, I think we still walk out of here friends and we're able to go places together and, you know, we've opened up a lot of stuff for both sides. If we do a little bipartisan dinners now, it used to be one way, we kind of welcomed everybody into the tent, so. It's been my pleasure to be the President and the Board and I look forward to the next two years. Those of you leaving, we'll miss you definitely, especially you, Alderman Alsaf, I know it's hard to believe, but I'll miss all you and thank you for your work. And with that being said, Alderman Dorso.
I'd like to think we went this long because you guys want to savor every last second of the party, Alderman. But before I say motion to adjourn, I just want to say it's been a privilege, God bless you and your families. If you miss me, I'm in town plot, I'm gonna be here as much as I can, but it's honestly, that is right, I live in a lot of places.
Yeah.
Despite, despite popular opinion, born and raised in town plot, not leaving anytime soon, not leaving you guys anytime soon, so get used to it. But God bless you and your families, especially with the holidays coming up, and thank you all for everything. And on that note, motion to adjourn.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy. All right, motion to adjourn. I'm gonna start bringing my lunch.